Okay, here is 9:00 AM. One page you got from 3/2018 on our county. Your order. That's one so far. Okay, everybody's all right. Thank you very much. Get on your hands and feet.
Well, we thank you for gathering, for those of interest, for all the business of the county. Thank you for all the elected officials, the department heads, and all the citizens of this county that do the only job or to keep this county in the condition. So they have passion to do all they can to enter this county. All the acts of which will give us from where we fall short and fail you. And as that, well, if you could guide us in the practice of the business of this county as we definitely witness the message of this public service. We ask blessings upon those who are serving on foreign fields and this area to, as they continue to put their lives in protection for us. And for all the first responders who flee, but stand at the gate to do those things are blessing and serving of protection for all those in this county. Guide us in the direct of course, we can go into our budget areas. We ask that our minds would be in the sermon area and then we would engage and do those things in the best interest for the citizens of the county. Have our minds to be focused and bring us the Lord in thousands of whispers, things of best interest for you. As you will, the guidance and practice of the Lord. Jesus.
For thy religion is in America, and in the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas's flag, I pledge allegiance to the people of Texas, one saying, under God, one individual.
Okay, the first thing on the agenda today is registration of minutes from July 9, 2018. Mr. Corbin, the D I L A, 2018, Special District Court, New York. There are changes for elections today and tonight. Notes are recognized. Vouchers to consider and act upon the removal of the payment vouchers process by the county attorney, all due to our second through July 18, 2018. Check numbers 1-812-81 through 1-814-63. In wire transfers, 1098 through 1108, and also 1108. In a total amount of $1,499,811,81 dollars and 99 cents.
I move that we approve the vouchers as presented.
Second for discussion. A couple of quick questions. Carrie, page four of 19. Check number 1-81322. County gas card declined. If you have any feedback.
Yes, they couldn't get the card reset, so he had to pay personal cash. This is just a brand new card to you. It was on travel.
It was just a brand new card or?
Uh, you know, it was one that we check out when people travel, when they're driving. And so you can, is it incorrect if you can use?
The pin with?
The pin number.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then page six of 19, Reagan, this may be a question for you. There's a couple of line items, total about 16,000 for the VMware reinstatement fee.
Yeah, we had some licensing stuff we had to redo.
So is that still continuing? I'm just, it's more of a question as we're prepping for budget as well. I thought we were kind of moving from away from the VMware, or is that still continuing?
No, VMware stuff we will always. VDI is.
VDI, okay.
Which was?
I'm sorry, it's page six of 19, right at the top. The two line items are down marking. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Judge.
The motion is second all day for the 4-0. Number three, insurance reports recognize the insurance under your form and why you're up for your formal proposal number 116118. Plan year report insurance advisory committee calls not being considering act upon following the work presentation in all throughout the county. But just on all final agreements as they become available. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. There's nothing unusual on the insurance side of your report. Um, can't believe it's that time of year again. To redo the insurance for the 1819 plan year. In your package, you should find a summary that I provided a long way after the presentation from Holmes Murphy. And I did have Julie Rickman here with me this morning to provide insight into the evaluations and information. Um, the insurance advisory committee did meet on July 5th, and all members of the committee were present. Um, we received responses on the medical and prescription benefit from TAC with possibly shieldages or recovery. United Healthcare, First Care, and Maxor. TAC and United Healthcare are both self-funded. First Care is fully funded and Maxor was prescription only. I did include that evaluation and analysis that was provided by Holmes Murphy and their peer to answer questions. And will provide further details, but after careful consideration and spend of that analysis. It was the unanimous recommendation of the committee to remain with TAC with possibly shield for medical insurance. The prescription coverage for the HMO plan year. And I'm not sure how y'all want me to do this, if you want to take one thing at a time, or if you want me to go all the way through the summary.
One thing at a time.
Okay. Um, and then, um, we were facing a 12.4% increase in medical claims. And an 18.1% increase in prescription claims, which came out to a total 16% increase without any kind of plan modifications. And so several variations were discussed in the meeting. Of funding and plan design options. There was a lot of deliberation during that meeting on the variations. And, uh, the insurance advisory committee unanimously voted on making some changes to the plan design that garner savings of $283,000. And knock that increase down to 11.54%. And these plan design changes include an increase in deductible. The out-of-pocket would also increase along with slight increases in the office co-pays. And make some adjustments to prescription benefit. And that included a reduction in the generic forecast. But I can turn that over to Julie Rickman, and she can walk you through that evaluation and the details there. And then from there, we can go on.
Indicate, what was the total increase monetary for the insurance this year?
Uh, don't have that dollar increase. Do you have that, Julie?
Before changes, it was, uh, just a moment. 700,000, 780,000.
That was before the adjustments to this.
Okay, thank you.
Finalize towards the co-pays and the stuff, was it used in the?
Yes, I was going to turn that over to Julie, but I can walk through those. Recommendation that the committee would.
What page?
Um, looking at page 12.
Thank you.
Of the evaluation. The in-network deductible would go to 1250. Would bring the out-of-pocket maximum from 3,000 to 4,500.
Could you give me the beginning of where we are now?
750 is the annual deductible currently. And we would go to 1250. 3,000 is. 3,000 is the out-of-network currently. And the recommendation is to move to 4,500. Doctor office co-pays are currently for just primary care, office visits are 25 currently. The recommendation is 30. Specialist office is currently 50. Recommendation is 60. Then you'll see changes now in the prescription benefits. The generics are currently 10. Dollar co-pay, we're recommending a decrease in that to further drive utilization of generics. A decrease to $5, so from 10 to 5. Preferred name brand drugs stay the same at 30. No change there. Non-preferred brand names, uh, are currently 50, should they go to 75. And specialty high-cost drugs go from 100 to 150. And those are the plan change recommendations.
Okay, from those recommendations, that's the 700,000 before the changes that you brought it down to 283,000?
We brought it down by 200,000.
By 283,000.
That's why it's 70.
Right.
Explain to me what non-preferred brand drugs.
Anytime you have a forgery, you have a brand name drug. And some are broken out into a preferred category, which is the lower co-pay. And then some are more expensive and they're considered non-preferred. And so they're generally a higher co-pay. But typically, when you have a non-preferred name brand drug, you'll have either a preferred name brand or a generic equivalent available as a general.
So I do have some questions, but I don't want to disrupt the format in terms of presentation. Is there other content you're planning to open?
I will listen, see how she answers.
My name is Julie Rickman, I'm with Holmes Murphy. I have some additional questions.
Yeah, but I'll wait till you go through your content, whatever it is that Kay said you were going to go through.
I'm going to go through the presentation. Yeah, did you want me to do that? Then, okay, perfect. Yeah, you can do that. We also have coffee for the presentation, and we kind of gave thank you for having us this morning. Um, we did a pretty in-depth analysis from the advisory committee as well as procurement, or your purchasing department and human resource staff. So getting an overview, and I know right now we're talking specifically about medical and pharmacy, and so that's a little touch on. And if you have questions, please let me know. So again, as Kay mentioned, we had four responses to our medical, medicine, pharmacy, and health's first care. Maxor, the pharmacy only. TAC, which is the plus for shield network. And then UMR, which is a United Healthcare Network. And so what we did, and looking on page five of the slide that you have in front of you. We tried to look back as to how your current plan is running. Because we can make a decision before venues and what plan design maybe you can make. But really, we need to figure out a starting point as to where your plan has run and how it's continuing to run. So on the particular slide that you're looking at right now, this is for medical specifically. The yellow wavy line you'll see in front of you is how your plan actually runs. So each data point, each little tick mark on there is where your plan ran through each of those months. You went back to September of 2015 for your data. And then if you look on, and the farthest right side, we have up to May on this particular chart data, May of 2018. The purple line is your best fit curve. So if you look at the data points, when you're trying to figure out budgeting for your medical. You can start at one data point, but if you started in August of 2016, for example, you're pretty much at an all-time low. If you're starting in October of 17, you're close to an all-time high. And so what we do is we trend what you were looking at forward and level that out, so that purple line is your best fit curve. So right now, we're looking at your medical trend, you're about 12.4% medical trend. National averages are anywhere between 8 and 9% on medical.
Any trends that you're seeing while we're running highs of a particular type of claim? We go through these ebbs and flows of wellness programs, so I'm just trying to get my hands around during your assessment, if you found something.
It's going to be large claims and utilization mostly. And I will tell you that it will ebb and flow every few years for any employer. So you'll look every three to five years, we call it the flood, and you'll see a giant tick up of your trend. The cost of services in general are going up, and that's just nationwide for medical. And so that's where you're seeing a lot of that decrease to a low.
And utilization, you hope to understand that, not picking the preferred providers or?
Sometimes it's that, or just the amount of times your folks are using.
So frequency.
On the next slide, we did the exact same analysis from what comes to your pharmacy. And as you look at pharmacy, isn't quite as volatile as your medical, as far as you see those jumps up and down, but the same thing. You're looking at 18.1 pharmacy, 18.1% pharmacy trend. When we look at this, by the way, we're looking at a rolling 12. And right now, pharmacy trend in the marketplace is anywhere between 12 and 13%. So again, you're running pretty good. We also pulled through on page seven, a history of contribution changes. So you can get an idea of what county has picked up over what employees have picked up over the last four years. So you'll see in 14, 15, it remained the same. 15, 16, the county picked up about 4.5 or 3.5%. And the employees picked up about 2.4% of that increase. 16, 17, the county picked up 6.87%. And employees picked up 6 and about 6.5%. And then in 17, 18, the county picked up 100% of this change, the increase for that last year at that 13.11%. And employees have done increasingly contributions. So what we do is when we look at the responses to the RFP, we try and take it apples to apples across the board. If anything remained the same, what does it look like cost-wise, using your same utilization, your same trend that you have right now? And so when you're looking at slide eight on the presentation, you'll see what your current spend is. You'll see that the renewal is based on the increase and also based on what your trend is. And then you'll see kind of what that variance is to projected. So when we look at the renewal, you'll see that the variance is current on the renewal. It's about $500,000 of an increase. So you look at the current total, it's 6.6 million, and the renewal would be 7.1 million dollars. We pulled that forward through UMR and then First Care as well. So UMR is a bit more expensive. You look at that 13% increase versus that 7.4%. Um, we did not pull Maxor on this, and there was a couple of reasons for that. Um, Maxor does not, and it's part of the space of the regulations that we had as the advisory committee. But they do not partner or TFA. Since their current recommendation was to remain with TAC, they don't partner with third-party pharmacy vendors. Um, UMR would, if you look at the cost of UMR, you could see that that's probably not the big option that we were looking at. And then for First Care, they're fully insured rates. So you are self-funded currently right now. If you look at First Care, those rates would be guaranteed for one year only. You wouldn't be able to have that level that you're looking at right now for having a self-funded plan. And then there's two different options that First Care gave us. One would be their PPO option, and then the other would be an HMO option. You should see savings through First Care by doing the HMO option, which would narrow down your network considerably. So First Care has a footprint in which they have in-network providers. And then out of that footprint, it is out of network, and you only have services in-network in your footprint. If you go out of the footprint, the only time that you have services is emergency care only, or if you're a student outside of the footprint. Um, the other piece is that they have a limited network. So the S A is the only provider within network for First Care in the city.
So I have a couple of questions here for you. So some of my questions are, I'm in healthcare outside my political role, and I've been in healthcare for over 20 years. And so what I find interesting about this conversation is part of my job through healthcare has been helping to pick plans and working through with insurance carriers. So like, I call it the only industry that you negotiate what you're not going to get paid. It's kind of what we always say right inside. But, um, when I look at the proposals, and let me also level set. I'm an advocate for strong benefits of this county. I think it is absolutely a differentiator in our market. It's why people come to work here. So those are some of the things I wrestle with every time we get ready for this discussion. Um, I also think about people on the front lines and can they afford these changes? Texas, to me, is uniquely positioned because we, as a state, did not participate in Medicaid expansion. So our frontline employees, once we get to this level of premiums and deductibles, it makes me sad if people have to drop coverage. We are the employer. So I say all that to say, I know this is budget day, and these are things that really hit home with me. Because people on the front lines often that need to go to the doctor. So frequency is a good problem to have. You want people to go to the doctor. You want them to identify things earlier, because if not, they're in the ER, in the trauma unit, because they can get treated. So that's kind of why, I wanted to paint the picture where some of my questions come from. So that tells me we have to think a little out of the box. So I was surprised to see the recommendation with a 50-50 split, staying with the current. Um, when I looked at the proposals on this page, page eight, to say First Care HMO versus PPO. I personally tend to lean on the PPO level. That's just me, because I have worked with patients on the front lines that go to the wrong doctor and go through the hierarchy of not even knowing they were in an HMO plan. That's where I tend to lean. But on the HMO side, PPO, when I look at comparable costs, and I know that there are some outliers and you might have to change a doctor. Having one hospital of choice is fairly typical in the market. Um, I think it's a bonus if we have two and they can go to both, so that's nice to have. But I'm really struggling with this and the point system that maybe you're going to get to here in a minute. Of how you associated points to TAC and then First Care. It really came down to network, if I remember right, network availability. And then it came down to their benefits plan, was the two main differences. So I'm interested in how you tied this to their point system.
So network availability is just what it sounds like.
Just that.
Yeah, we're talking about if you're excluding a specific hospital system in network or.
You get less points.
Yeah, you get less points for that, absolutely. And part of that is because there is a cost, I mean, being in the industry for as long as you have, there's a cost for disruption, there's a cost for movement. And that also is perceived benefit for employees. Choice is always a benefit for employees. And so that was definitely consideration for that. When we were looking at the plan design, currently being a self-funded employer, there is a cost associated with moving. There's going to be run-up things associated with changing from a self-funded plan to a fully insured plan. Um, you don't have, there's a swing of about 5% of, you know, between 5 and 7% of administration costs moving to a fully insured model. And you don't necessarily have the control over budgeting as much as you do under the fully insured model to a self-funded. So those were also considerations when we talked about plan design. You don't have as much flexibility within the First Care models, being the self, or fully insured plans that are state filed. They are basically the plans that are on the paper, and this is what you get. So you're not able to tweak maybe a emergency room co-pay or something along those lines. You're really looking at changing the plan from one plan to another and not necessarily being able to narrow down things. So for example, one of our, obviously the hot topics right now is pharmacy. Pharmacy trend is going up by far more than medical trend in general. And so we'll work with our clients specifically to say, hey, let's go ahead and talk about, for example, the EBBY pin. The EBBY pin, when that generic equivalent came out, and EBBY pin is about $300 a month, the generic equivalent is about $10 a month. For a lot of our fully insured clients, we couldn't do too much with them. For our self-funded clients, we were able to make the EBBY pin either non-preferred or have it excluded from the plan because the generic equivalent was available and a lot less cost. You're not able to be as nimble and flexible with a fully insured model.
So I have a little bit, maybe a philosophical question. Based on the insurance trends today, do we have that luxury to say we want to be able to be nimble and agile? Like, and I go back to the premium to the employee, right? Because with the proposal and the 50-50 split, this would put an employee in the family at over $400 a month for insurance, 414. With a $1,250 deductible. Once we hit the thousand range, we are in a high deductible plan. And so I don't think it's until patients go to the hospital the first time that they go, I have to pay all of that upfront. And they do, they go to your ER room and say, I'll take your $1,000 if you'd like to pay that today. That's a very real conversation to patients. So for a family, someone carrying insurance for their family, their insurance would go up to 414 a month. They would have $1,250 deductible. Their out-of-pocket is growing, right? So all of those variables is like, I'm saying, do we have the luxury to say, well, we want to be flexible, and we want to be nimble, and I understand that. But at some point, you gotta, we have to decide because this is not sustainable for employees.
Yeah, no, absolutely, completely understand where you're coming from. So what we have is what we brought in front of the advisory committee is our budget model. And it is a real-time budget model where you can sit and you can change to double those co-pays, co-insurance, adjust everything in real time. It shows us what the plan savings or projected savings would be for each of those changes. The reason why we settled on the plan design that we did and the change that we did is because it seemed the most sustainable. It seemed the easiest to accept as far as we know we're going to have to have plan changes, or we know we're going to have to have people that absorb additional costs. And that's just the reality of how your plans are currently running. There's not a whole lot of choice when it comes to, can we just stay at a 750?
Yeah, and I'm not saying that's where we live either. I just, I'm not looking for easy. It is a very disruptive time in healthcare. And so I think for us to keep saying, well, we need to increase, and that is not fair if you live in the state of Texas, right? It's just not for people, and you run up against uninsured people that work at Potter County, right? And so it's a very.
And it's very, medical insurance is a very personal benefit. And it does impact folks directly by, just that nature of what medical insurance is. When we did speak with the advisory committee, one of the things that I definitely want to focus on this year is a lot more focus on wellness. And having those programs that are available to you through TAC that are at no cost, no additional cost to the county. But programs that actually help drive utilization, not necessarily utilization down, but thrive certain disease rates down. So diabetes, weight management, breast management, those types of programs are available. We really do want to push those programs and have that more of an upfront, up-centered, in-center focus for this upcoming plan year and beyond. Because as you said before, we can't reduce trend without having folks aware of where they're sitting at right now. And there's definitely some great programs available for your current plan, because up till now, it hasn't been necessarily utilized in the best way. So we want to, you know, move forward and get folks aware and know that things are out there and continue with that, you know, focus on wellness.
Yeah, and I certainly, I think that's notable. We've only seen that on the books for three, five years. We don't see those numbers and the impact of that. None of us may, we might not sit in this, we'll be here three, five years. Um, so anyway, Judge, I say all that to say, I personally, I'm not sure I agree with the point system and the way it was rated. I certainly don't sit on the advisory committee for the insurance, so all of these questions I'm just kind of hearing, it just only happens to correct.
Those are extremely interesting to us in the dialogue. And I, you know, I feel somewhat in that too, because not having contributed to the sitting room, perhaps, to be getting all of that. So it seems a little bit overwhelming at this point, but we're getting, and I certainly am sure you're concerned, Commissioner. We want to make sure that we put ourselves in position for our employees. And again, I agree with you living in Texas, and so that puts that as a deficit already starting on.
Carrie.
I don't think it's Texas, I think it's the Affordable Care Act. We have seen insurance rates go up to 100% for our county since that thing went through. Well, I've been able to be available, I mean, they all know that.
But there's a couple, to your point, there's a couple of reasons to be behind that as well. Um, annual and lifetime maximum limitations for individuals win away with the Affordable Care, which is fantastic for folks that have had strong expense.
Chanters.
Yeah, but when you talk about, you know, a plan to go up, removal of pre-existing conditions and limitations was huge. Some folks wouldn't be insurable before, which again, is not necessarily a positive thing. But when you talk about costs, that absolutely increases. Um, so it does have definitely an impact on the county and employees.
And I think we also have to recognize insurance is a for-profit model, right? That is just the truth. I have worked in healthcare and really, at the end of the year, there is one computer button where they do a cross-the-board 5% increase, just like this.
And maybe they look for an 85%. And they they look for an eighty-five percent valuation in general.
Yeah, and profit is at a thirty percent model. So your price is, let's say it's a thousand dollars to get a CAT scan, the profit is right at thirty percent. So even when a patient comes in uninsured and you offer a fifty percent discount, you're still making profit. The the profit model is at thirty percent.
And that's another positive about remaining as a self-funded employer is that your claims are your claims and you're paying the claims out of account that is your dollars, you're paying it. You're paying TAC to just basically process the claims and and have a call center and the the pieces around that. But they're actually not making necessarily the same type of profit that a self-funded employer would because self-funding or a fully insured um carrier would. Because if you think about the fully insured space, they have to pay light switches, they have to pay employees, they have to, you know, again, make profit as as you're saying before, which is why you have that swing. And, you know, in the fullness of time, as a self-funded employer, you're going to win. I mean, win is a lose term when it comes to medical, but I mean, ultimately, you're going to save money, same um remaining self-funded.
Carrie, a question, and then I'll I'll be quiet here, Judge. I, you know, this is a topic I'm very passionate about for our employees, but um when we think about entry-level positions into the county, whatever department that falls in, will you help me, um what's a salary range that someone coming in? You know, I think about our housekeeping staff that works under Mike, I think of some Roman Bridge positions. I just, is there a, is it thirty thousand range, is it twenty, forty, twenty?
Probably twenty-eight would be a good one. Thank you. Yeah, and keep in mind the deductibles that we talk about are obviously affecting those folks that are utilizing the plan. You definitely have those folks that don't go, um but, you know, two or three times a year because they have a flu and they need to get their physical examination. So really, that deductible is going to hit more of those folks that have an outpatient or inpatient surgery. Um they have some severe medical conditions, so when you talk about that, you know, you're again, you're talking about impacting the folks that are more utilizing the plan, so your your folks that are going a couple of times a year, they're not going to feel that impact as as much as substantially.
Yeah, no, and but unfortunately, that's very catastrophic times for people. They feel that when it's their child or it's their spouse sitting on an ER bed. And then they have this reality of how much is my deductible, I shouldn't have really went to that budget meeting, right? But um I I certainly appreciate your work and and the committee's work, so please don't mistake my comments.
Absolutely.
So I guess the final line is, are we comfortable with the the numbers that uh question about employees?
And do we have to decide this now, Judge, or can we take this into budget? You know, I I think of the calculator, I think we've done a couple, maybe a couple of years ago, maybe last year, where we started to play around a little bit with the design changes and try to see how we could offset that in budget. I don't know if we enter the protocol and handle this. I think we can offset it off. I mean, you guys have decided, really have decided what what we need to do, right?
You know, all of this was discussed in our committee. All the same feelings that I've expressed here. But if you look at what is being asked of the county, from seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand down to five hundred and seven thousand, that'll be our our portion of the increase. You know, we talked about the employee and the family, and I I realize that, yes, it is a an increase of forty-two dollars a month, twenty-one something a pay period. But for the security and the knowledge that you have insurance, I think that's a fair to cheap expense. Where the county's increase is just short of a hundred dollars a month for employee. I I really think that this is as good a program as we can get with what our expenses have been with our insurance. You know, I know you mentioned first care. First care, if you really dig into first care, the limitations to those insured doesn't make up for the difference. At one time in my career, I had first care, very limiting.
Did you have the HMO or PPO, Commissioner?
I think it was PPO. But when you're out of this footprint that we're talking about, you're out of you're out of the system. And so I I think we have a good, a good plan with uh with TAC and Blue Cross Blue Shield. I think the decisions were hard to come by. We spent over two hours past five o'clock looking at this and I'm going to support what we recommend.
So do we need to feel that we did the best bang for the buck?
Well, I don't know if it's best bang for the buck, but it's the best thing we can do, but we got fixed it, so we want to operate.
Well, it was unanimous.
Julie, did you maybe share with them how we're standing as far as a county compared to the other counties? Because we talked a lot about that. I mean, where our deductibles are in our other counties?
Yeah, a seventy-three thousand dollar deductible is is a lower deductible when it comes to
Talk to your benefits.
Absolutely. Um we see a lot of deductibles, or a lot of employers go through that two thousand dollar range. Um so a a twelve hundred and fifty dollar deductible is still well within um a very reasonable benefit compared to where the market is sitting right now. We have very few that have anything less than a thousand. Um and in fact, we had looked at a thousand dollar deductible in our discussions as well with the advisory committee. It just wasn't enough, um it didn't make enough sense from a financial perspective. Um and the extra two hundred and fifty dollars definitely did make some impact. Again, you know, looking at the folks that are utilizing the benefit and and, you know, to your point, it's those folks in catastrophic situations. I think we have some um strategy and planning that we need to do for the long term to figure out the best way to fix, again, wellness, additional programming that we can bring into play to be able to help offset some costs for individuals. Um but I think at at this point, you know, just based off, again, we we discussed for hours, it was not a light decision and and again, it's not necessarily one that was, you know, hey, this is happy, it works for everyone. I think that at the end of the day, it was, this is where we're sitting at dollar-wise, this is where a trend is right now and we have to do something that that does make some impact because it it's not sustainable the way it is currently.
And I'm hearing that one of the strong recommendations of the committee was to pursue a very proactive wellness.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, that's something we, I mean, Ms. Ray, that's a kick the can down the road, let's just be honest in that discussion. We don't have a person that leads that, I mean
That's why I wanted to publicly bring it up, and if we talked about that, and I wanted to, you know, on record.
Yeah, absolutely.
Me certainly do need to
So there's there's two pieces with that, too. One, when we come in on board, we definitely help lead. And in fact, as a, an organization, as a as a consultant firm, we are the leaders as far as wellness goes and reducing trend or at least helping trend of that work, or, you know, not not raise as as much as it does based off of the programming that we put in place. The other piece is, TAC does have a wellness coordinator that does run programs and help utilize how those programs work and work with your employees and staff. And so you don't necessarily have to have a full-time staff person working on this, there's going to be a person that will help work through. I think it's just a matter of tapping into that resource and and getting that through. As as you said, um it's it's likely not going to be something that hits us in the next, you know, year or so. Um but definitely something that I can ensure that's in the long term. Um I have another county that I worked with, their top twenty claimants five years ago were all um stroke, heart attack, heart disease, diabetes, everything that's preventable or at least treatable. Um and you fast forward to now, they actually only have top ten claimants. And of those ten claimants, only one of them was something preventable. And that really has to do with the wellness program that they put in place and how aggressive and how much they communicated with employees as to how that helps importantness and importance county where you can keep your profits, you know, please.
Okay, so your question was, do we do we tackle this now or during budget, is that what you asked? Yeah, I mean, I I see the way that you have it broken down to approve, uh potentially approve the recommendation for the committee for medical, dental, and I know we spend a lot of our time on medical, which is for obvious reasons, but um on the plan design changes, is this agenda item going to take the fifty fifty split the way it's designed? Or are we taking that conversation into budget? Does that question make sense?
Kind of.
Well, it makes a big difference in the budget.
Sure, that's
So I think a decision needs to be made.
Well, my question is
It goes right into the base of our budget.
Well, we as a group have a chance to tell the committee that we didn't want to vote, I mean, is that
But you can say that if you want.
You mean, here, if anyone can
Well, we did, we did.
So what's your option?
Last year, we voted, we voted three to four. Yeah, I thought In the caring, yeah, we voted three to seven. And it's an agenda, I don't know. Yes, it is, I just want to make sure I'm following the order. Um because if we take this action and we say fifty fifty split, that is a big difference for our employees. I think what we did last time is we presented the agenda item, allowed employees to come. At some point, I remember some employees coming and I'm going to be going a couple of years back because we go through these, and these are big hits, right, every year. Um help provide some feedback and listen in and understand what these plan design changes are, I just
When does this have to be done? Oh, well, we'll have to have it for budget. I mean, at some point during
The only I know. Yesterday. So what would y'all prefer, David? You want it now?
I'm ready to take the committee's recommendation.
I don't mind pursuing the public's decisions.
So so you think that you you would hope that there's a better solution out there than what we're talking about?
Absolutely.
Well, there's other, there's other solutions, but it's going to cost.
It's going to cost a lot. I'm I'm thinking that the committee did the best they could to save the county money and employees money, correct?
Try to have a balance between the cost of the county and the cost of the employees, I suppose.
The county took a hundred percent of the hit last year to remember that, so
Which would be a sixteen point one percent or sixteen point two percent.
Now we want to share it, too. I think it
Well, I'm sorry, what I'm trying to say is
Somebody has to pay for it, and is it always the taxpayers that have to pay for it? Or should we have to pay for this, or are our employees that pay?
Yeah, I think last year wasn't an exception, Commissioner, that's not a trend that we typically follow. I think that's what, where we landed on, go ahead.
Something that you, it sounds like that's the way you
No, I just would like a little time to look at the whole budget process and discern. Um you know, we go through this, start to to flush out what do we need holistically as a county benefits? And my mind hits my topless, um whether this is the best package we could bring to the employees in terms of cost. I I don't necessarily agree with the rating scale, that's a whole different discussion than the cost that we're offsetting to the employees.
Are you looking to add more, uh do you want to put a touch more?
I would make, I would like to make it a little less of a hit to employees. Do I think we need to take a hundred percent? Not necessarily. Do I think that's a very high deductible? Yes, I know that's a market trend. Would I have rated if I was on the other end that exact way? Probably not. I probably would have had a hard discussion of fully funded versus self-funded and what is our reality? What is our truth? And it's not going to change, this year we will have, next year, we will have the same conversation. So at some point, we're going to have to face that door that we're afraid of on the other end.
Keep in mind, your trend is, the way that it's going forward right now, being going to a fully insured model does not necessarily help you.
Right, right.
I mean, that's not, even if you went to a fully insured model, if your trend is still taking a eighteen percent for pharmacy and twelve percent for medical, at the end of it, your claims are your claims. So fully insured versus self-funded doesn't necessarily make a big difference as far as overall costs to the county because at some point, you're going to realize whatever those claims happen to be and you're going to have to pay for them one way or the other. So when we're looking at the plan design, it was, hey, from a an employee perspective, what gives employees choice? Because choice is definitely a benefit for employees, they want to ensure that they have some sort of choice of facilities they go to. Um and the other piece is, you know, just, again, fully insured versus self-funded, you have to look at if we changed to a fully insured model and we did some analysis with that with the committee as well. Um you have run-out claims that would happen through TAC and first care, which basically means that if you make that switch, you're paying your fully insured premiums for several months, but you're also paying the run-out claims for your self-funded claims for at least three to six months, depending on how the claim plan will go. So there definitely is a transition, so you basically are paying almost double um for several months in a row, which from a county perspective, absorbing that cost is, there's there's a piece of that, too.
Yeah, and I um I appreciate that and I think the root of it, I'm unsettled, is employee choice is important. They should be able to choose what hospital, but if they can't afford the insurance, we have made the choice for them. They have no, they have no hospital to go to. And I'm not necessarily an advocate of fully funded, I just, I mean, this commission hears this from me every year. We have to think differently, we're in very different times in healthcare. And I just, I, it's what I continue to wrestle with and we work with consultants, I work with consultants outside of of county work. And consultants are not bringing anything like new thinking to the table, right? I I, and I'm not seeing you, you personally in this process, I'm just thinking outside of this. I'm like, well, I could have done that, right? So I I appreciate it, I appreciate the work and, Commissioner, I know this is, this is hard, this is hard on everybody's heart because this hits our employees at the end of the day. So however you like to call it.
Not only our employees, it's the taxpayers. And I want, everybody to know I wasn't the only one there. So if there's other committee members need to speak up and say why we did this.
Oh, I just wanted to know, are the individual monthly uh output for the employees going up? How much, can you tell us what it would be?
What was the exact amount, employee only?
Well, just to be clear, because I
Robert, one?
The fifty fifty split.
The employee only, eight dollars and eight cents.
Across the board.
It's seventy-eight dollars, uh the change that's being recommended. If you're an employee only, seventy-eight dollars and eight cents. Employee and spouse, two ninety-four, forty-six. Employee and children, two nineteen, seventy-three. Child, I'm sorry. And then employee and children, three eleven, twenty. Employee and family, four fourteen, ninety-three.
Did that help you, Carol?
Yeah.
But do you know what it is now?
Yeah, well, I know for me, I don't know for the for my colleagues, but
What I was, what I was trying to tell you far as interrupted is what the increase was.
Okay. Yeah, that would help, too.
People's being, people across the board, where we are now and where we will be.
I have a question.
I don't have the where you are now, I can tell you the increase per
Per year, yeah, I know you did a half of that, it's pretty serious, but
The employee only is eight dollars and eight cents. Employee and spouse, thirty dollars and forty-six cents. Employee and child, twenty-two dollars and seventy-three cents. Employee and children, means more than one child, is thirty-two dollars and twenty cents. An employee and whole whole family, forty-two, ninety-three.
And again, those are monthly brackets, so
Carol, yeah, have the current rate if you want, if you want the current.
I just couldn't, I just couldn't, I just couldn't make the
Okay, thank you, you have the
Yeah. Is there anybody else in the committee who want to talk about it at all? Well, we spent a lot of time and deliberation, we worked really hard. Bottom line is, it's where we are. And, you know, the the increase is there, we have to fund the increase uh one way or the other. And it doesn't seem appropriate to pass all of it off to taxpayers. And so it was the the recommendation, and it was a unan- unanimous um decision of the county of the insurance advisory committee to go fifty fifty, to share that cost between the employee and the county.
So I'm assuming that, and you spoke with me on this several times, and I can appreciate that. Uh so I'm assuming, I'm hearing you saying that the committee is comfortable with the recommendation to the
I'm at the purchasing age, and I know the criteria is very subjective, so I I pressed a lot, like Commissioner said, energy and just, all I kept in mind was employee and put myself in that position. And I just, I just can't impress upon how difficult this decision was. But employee choice is important, I think, in my opinion, because that means they get to do what they're doing without a lot of disruption. They have some employees involved in making that transition, but like I said, I know this is a full committee decision and that's, I believe, yes, that I think that recommendation is where we need to go at this particular time. Like Commissioner Murphy has said, it will definitely be the decision wherever we go, it's going to have to happen every year. This discussion doesn't end in a year or so.
Every year. Nobody, nobody wants to see an increase, nobody wants the employee to have to pay more.
Nobody, nobody wants to see an increase. Nobody wants the employee to have to pay more. I mean, that's, that's bottom line. But it's the reality of it.
Yeah, and we can appreciate that, but I want to make sure they play out the signs also very much on the score. Be able to determine where I'd be preferred.
One other thing I'd like to add, I know in an emergency situation, I think you'd even feel more comfortable going to a hospital than was, I can't go here. Sometimes education is hard. That's one thing that HR would have to do is educate a lot. Oh, I used to could do that, and I can't do that now. I can't go to the hospital.
And I think in trauma, what a lot of people forget when they're looking at plan design is that Northwest is the trauma facility. They used to be a level four, if I remember correctly. If you go to the wrong hospital, there are trauma exclusions. They stabilize and transfer you to the right hospital. So, they do right by the patient. I used to sit on the committee that said that patient's in our ER and we have to stabilize and transfer them. And we had counselor go visit them and say, you're in the wrong spot, let's get you over. As an organization, we helped offset that bill for that patient. So, I say all that to say, I feel like you have two great medical providers, VSA and Northwest. They're both great. And I feel like they do right by our patients in the community. Choice is important. I would not disagree with that. But I guarantee you, if an employee has to lose their insurance, they can't go to the doctor. Forget, I used to like Dr. Smith, right? So, it just, yeah, and I'm not advocating that the county picks up a hundred percent. I recognize this is the taxpayers, of course. And it's one of the things we continue to bet every single year. But I think for us to just look at this and, and not expect people with our frontline pay to be, to be able to afford this, that's a very hard truth.
So Commissioner, what you are advocating as far as what this commission should look at, given your experience of wealth of years in the medical field, is there something that you see that the spouse does that we could be looking at?
Well, I would, I would do a couple of things. I would echo the wellness initiatives. I would say we need to add teeth to that. There needs to be things that are measurable. It cannot be a broad stroke policy, and let's look at with budget, what are things we're going to, we're going to actually build in. It's a priority for this commission and we measure it. I mean, that's, that's the truth. We all have bosses. And anytime you have to report up, you prepare in a very different way because someone's looking at that number, right? So it becomes a priority for us. I think we do have to be able to look out of the box. We may not be able to stick with Blue Cross, the TAC initiative in terms of the long term. And I don't know that this year, budget, we might be able to do a little more than fifty fifty. Should the county pick up a hundred percent? I, I don't think so. I would like to go into budget with some flexibility to say, could we pick up, I'm, I'm just making up a number, sixty percent, sixty-five. I tend to like, I like to give a little more to the employee. I just feel like it's a good message. But that's what I'm wrestling with.
So concerning what Commissioner has, uh, fostered, carry, is there any flexibility in that we can put fifty minutes of it that we may give to the citizens?
Sure, we can plug in and hold out more.
What's our deficit going into budget? Uh, well, from what, like, we start right after lunch. What's the number to bet? It's about. Three million?
Yeah, if you go off of the department request, it's about three million.
Okay.
Whatever, whatever we do, we still have to make that five hundred sixty one thousand.
Sure.
Or, or more.
Or more depending on.
If you mess with the deductible.
The design.
I always like to look at, see if we can put in somebody and not close the door, only thing. So I, I would recommend that we take.
Speaking to the committee, I would say that we were pretty hard to come up with this. It's pretty disappointing when you don't listen to the committee. And so, maybe in the future, there should not be.
Well, I think in the future, we have an agenda item. The committee met on July fifth, so it would have been nice to be briefed. This is a big decision and it is really hard to have it in one commissioner's court and be prepped. We are not privy to that detail, Commissioner, so I'm sorry.
That's the way, that's the way all the committees work here. And so if you, if you don't trust the committee system, do away with it.
Well, I think we don't trust.
Well, seems like it.
Certainly, I think it is something mattering since giving us.
I don't, I don't wrestle with the committee, but I probably won't certainly next year if this is the way it's going to be. Two years in a row, this is.
I'm sorry, you're right, but I think that's how.
Regarding the choice of plan, this is the legal part. There's a difference between claims paid and claims paid. The claims paid has been good with Blue Cross. I have no idea what it would be for the first year or some other carrier. What I used to do is some of the protection for them, with some of it involved the healthcare industry. But I've seen some very tragic situations. So if you want to change who you're doing business with, there's a risk involved. If you want to change the healthcare industry, we can't do that. People invest in the healthcare industry. They want to turn on their money, they want it quick, they want this. The quickest way to do that is increase the cost. And yes, the committee did the best they could balancing the additional cost and tax. I'd love to see us fix the healthcare system, but we can't admit it here.
Well, stated. And again, I'm, I'm certainly not pushing back on what the committee did. I can appreciate it and certainly add its value to it, not only this committee, all the committee that are in the county working for this board. Their representation, so I'm not at all pushing that aside. But I would just say that if there's a way, there's even a small open, that's something I, that we may be able to look at the numbers to, to eat. Given what you bring us, we should take advantage of it.
And I would, I would say, I, I know it is probably interesting to watch this on the outside end, but I feel like this is personally very refreshing. Right? Each one of us in our seat are not, we are not a rubber stamp commission, right? And so I think that's the other side of the coin. We are, we do wrestle with this personally, each one of us on a very different level. I don't think anyone could ever accuse this commission of being rubber, a rubber stamp. We debate this. It's heavy on all of our hearts. And I certainly commend the work the committee has done. So thank you to each one.
You don't make any more thoughts, do you?
I did not tee that up, whatever.
I know, I have, I have many thoughts, but I think that we need to go with this committee with their recommendation because I can't see that they would go anywhere. So let's see how bad we can screw everybody. Pretty sure they did it to, to benefit the county, I think, or to see.
As a member of the committee and an employee in the county, I can tell you that this was a very hard part, thought decision for me. I will be among some of the hardest hit employees. But I still see it as the only way that we can achieve any kind of balance in the increase that we're seeing, and we can't change the increase.
Can I say something to you?
Yes.
Does the outside look it in? I mean, I understand for the employees the cost for that, but I also know that as being a county employee from years ago and having like, not even having to pay for your insurance, as, you know, we've grown through these years. And I know that a lot of my employees, they stay because of county.
And they come back here because of county.
And I left, I was a county employee who left and went out into the private sector. And I came back seven and a half years later. I was a little hard-headed. So, you know, I came back seven and a half years later. So, it is a growing trend of expensive, expensive healthcare. But I also know that the employees appreciate, maybe not always, because we forget, but they, they appreciate having healthcare insurance in a world where a lot of people do not.
Well, I appreciate, that's what we want to contribute, maybe some especially some of the committee members. I think we got that, I'll be sure, I'll passion particularly it very well, so.
And it will be a hardship for the thousand. I mean, I can think of one of people in our office right now that, you know, has a family member who went through something, and that is a huge hardship on her. And I don't really know how that's going to happen, but I'm not really sure what you can do to bring those, those costs down.
I mean, we award the formal proposal eleven sixty-one dash eighteen for dental, third party administrator and pharmacy.
I have a motion, I have a second. I'll say. I have a motion, I have a second, on the favor of the.
Over. I'm sorry.
Are we doing them all at the same time? Is that all of them? Is that all?
No, that's just the.
Okay. This is medical.
I make a motion that you approve eleven sixty-one dash eighteen for dental and vision as presented by the committee. I, I have a question.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Dental vision on the favor of the. Number, uh, letter C or formal proposal one one six one eighteen for basic life, dependent life or voluntary life. I have a motion on that.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Consider act of plan design changes as presented. I have a motion on that.
And is that the deductible and co-insurance? Is that also the fifty fifty split? Is that considered your plan design changes or something?
I agree.
Okay.
It's a move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, on the favor of the. Of those, three one. And you set funding levels for fiscal year eighteen nineteen. And that is to approve the fifty fifty split. Is that right?
A move we approve these set funding levels for apply eighteen nineteen for our insurance.
Second. I have a second, on the favor of the. Three, one.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, number five, pressures report, direct national pressures report, and consider act of. Okay, I'm not just trying to do the end version here. Are you afraid, are you afraid of this? Never. Okay, in your visual report, just pull that, go to page three, just to give you an outlook of current rates at the end of June. The general rate as well as the other checking accounts. And so as you can see, we're well into the two percent. Which is fantastic. Then if you go to page six, this just kind of gives your cash balance at thirty-four point four million dollars in our general fund. So, cash, we're still doing quite well. There's a chart there that kind of shows where we're at. Figuring where we were from this time last year. And then on page eight, this is tax pool. And mainly just so you can see our general fund and what our investments are currently. Then on page thirteen is tax pool prime. And we're still a little over ten million in investments there. Okay, then on page nineteen, at Texas class, we're a little over ten, yeah, ten million. And I did move six million last week over to our general fund at A and B for the end of year expenses and payroll and different things, get ready for the expenses we have coming up. And then finally, your last thing I wanted to bring to your attention, I did include an extra sheet this time. I hope it's in your packet. Yes. Just to kind of give you an overall view of how our interest rates have fared this year. And first quarter, generally, you know, we had a lesser amount to invest. And so, and of course, our rates were lower. Second quarter, we earned a hundred and sixty-three, and this is just our general fund, remember. It's not the county, it's just general fund. A hundred and sixty-three thousand. And then at the end of this quarter, April, May, June, it's two hundred and six thousand, one hundred and three dollars and forty-three cents. So this morning at A and B in our general fund, we have nineteen million dollars. And today's rate is two point two five. That's it, you get it. Thank you so much.
Would you say the total was?
I'll give you exactly the total. Nineteen million, seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and one dollars and thirty-nine cents. We need to approve. Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. I have a second. I have a motion, I have a second, on the favor of the. Thank you guys, very much. Number six, quarterly budget comparisons, you recognize the third quarter comparison of fourth quarter, five seventeen eighteen. As you're still recording, if you have any questions?
I didn't have any questions.
So if you press it to me, we'll let you. Number seven, wireless connectivity. To hear a report from courthouse elected officials and department heads in reference to the wireless connectivity that we're running in the courthouse. Gird your loins, everybody. Who wants to speak to this first?
Okay, well, I will.
Okay.
Um, so recent, in a recent meeting that we had, not, we weren't discussing wireless connectivity. It was another meeting that we had, and everybody just kind of started talking about the issues that we were having. So, we called Brandon, and I know that Brandon has personally been in our office, or his team has been in our office on a weekly basis, trying to help us establish connectivity. And doing our jobs is, it's, it's very hard to do because of all, we have job phone calls, we have printing, printing issues. When we have people standing for a marriage license, it may take them. Usually we can get people in and out in like ten minutes, but if you're having printing issues, most of which come on their lunch hour, it's very frustrating for them. It's frustrating for us to tell them we can't provide you the service that you need.
They get married on their lunch hour, too.
That is true. And the world down is they're getting married on their lunch hour. And so, the discussion progressed and I opted to be the one forever, but to send out an email saying, hey, we need to let, we need to know what the issues are that we need to bring to commissioner's court because we realize there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues that go along with this. Number one, money, and number two, the historical building. And so I don't know if anybody else, I've compiled all this data that everybody sent me. It was just via email. So some of it is, you know, I know my girl's description that we have rolly ball. That's where, you know, it's just, it's just, it's not connecting. It makes it hard to clock in. It makes it hard for them to clock in when they're trying to be diligent to and from work. Sometimes that's a benefit for, for them if they've actually, if they're actually running behind. But, and, and as we stated in, or as I stated in this letter, that this is nothing against the IT department. This is something for us to look forward to and try to figure out what we can do to make this better. We do have one, in my office specifically, we have one computer that is hardwired. And Stephanie went over and did a test on that, and you can see it back here in the results. I mean, she was able to go over to that hardwired computer, ran like a, ran like a champ. But not everybody is that way. And disconnecting bridges, using, I use my personal cell phone on the lot to, to call people. Or you're sitting there going, wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on. And the response from Sanders' office, which, right there, sorry. She's pretty much the frontline for Potter County, so she's answering the information line. A lot of times, they can't, the people can't hear us. No, they can hear us. We cannot hear them. No, they can hear us, we cannot hear them coming through. That's usually the problem. So it's very, uh, broken. Um, and so I think that, you know, I hope you all had time to read through all of these issues that we're having. I think LaDon kept the best notes from county court at law too. She provided all the emails that she could kept. And, um, again, we just, we just need to find, we need to find a go for it method. And we're, we're behind Brandon because I really feel like, and again, I'm just speaking in my office, they're there almost every week. We jokingly say, we can make you a desk here in our office because just stand by, cause something's gonna happen. So I know he did meet with somebody last week and all that he would carry that forward. If there's anybody else that wants to speak from the departments within the courthouse, please feel free to, please feel free to speak up.
Yeah, part of the, part of the issue now is that we have, you know, all the different software packages that we use, which is, it's a lot more data. But yeah, we have met with vendors, uh, already, just to kind of start that process of what can and can't be done. Mike, there's a lot of information that he was able to provide, just, you know, according to the, the historic commission. So there's, we, we have some ideas, we have some, some things that we are looking at, um, some meetings coming up, uh, to try and solve the issue in the best way possible. We don't want it to be a huge expense. And like what's, what Julie said, we have, you know, it's historic building, we can't, there's things we can and can't do. So, um, we have some ideas. I don't really have an answer yet, is what it comes down to. But it is something that we are like actively pursuing. And that's, that's what the whole, I think the whole goal of it is. We, it just has to be out there, you know what I mean? We, now it's, it's easy to say it's bad. It's just, it's more difficult. When you look at the data, it, it's really bad and she's right, we are there all the time. And it's not just her department, we're, my guys are over there, in this building all the time, you know? With same things. And then we're at a point now where there just isn't a lot we can do with what we have. I mean, you know, you can reset bridges, but when you have this much bandwidth and you're using that much bandwidth, I mean, that's what it comes down to, so.
And Julie, I will add, um, at the meeting, and Brandon's referencing Judge Hammer, we're both there, um, we hear you. Uh, we did a walkthrough along with Mike that Brandon, uh, mentioned. We got brandings of how wires can even go anywhere in this building. So that's an interesting way, um, the model that I, that I interpreted reminded me of a cake. You know, there's layers, um, of the cake that you can't get past. So I think that's where we sit today. There is another meeting scheduled, I think this Thursday. Um, we're really trying to do some out of the box thinking in order to support that. But to me, this topic is an exact example of why it, it's great that we have leaders and, but we, this court went under leadership direction to go in that way. And that superseded everyone. I, I was a very new commissioner at the time, but it didn't work. So I remember that from page, uh, our broad page, uh, very, very clearly, uh, that it wasn't working, right? Here's your brand new courthouse, you can't move in, sixteen million dollar project. So we all hear you. Um, and I think everybody, I, I don't want to speak for each one of you, but I think everyone has been leery about that decision. So I don't think anybody's surprised to hear that, but it's a good example of if it just doesn't feel right, you know, each one of us in our own spot have to figure out where we land.
I believe we're meeting next Thursday.
Oh, is it next Thursday?
Yeah.
But it gets worse the more software we put on, the more data we're pushing across. And you know, if it's a goal to go to quote a paperless environment, you know, those goals, if the judges can't pull up their documents, if they can't, and I mentioned that was what you said about, you know, that you, actually, you really don't hear yourself on the phone. But, so, but with that, you know.
I'll call you on yourself.
Yeah. So I mean, there's got to be something done, whether it's because of the building or the money and, you know, everything is always sitting through all those meetings here, I can see. Our county has always been about, um, what, you know, what project are we gonna pay for?
This is the building. The question is the building. What can be done in the building today? I don't, Judge John was speaking, but we aren't even worried about, not worried, we all been worried about. Don't get young, I've always worried, you know that. Uh, but just the building.
I know. It picks up everything now, the mystery.
I always worry about that. But going in, we really are looking at what can the building sustain? That's, that's the block that we're at today.
That's one of the overall things is, I mean, the building's not going anywhere. We're not ever moving out of the building, why would we?
I'm gonna absolutely have realistically.
Like one, one, two, I would say one to three, but I wanna say one to two options.
So are we already now from committee to give us a, a firm?
Not yet.
Not yet.
No.
That's, this meeting that's coming up, we will kind of determine more of what can and can't be done as far as, again, all the underlying things, so.
But it's basically the building. What can be done in the building is what we're at today. We're working on it, everybody. And please calm down. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Brandon. And number eight, we're passing out the two weeks. And for nine district courts officers to consider and please transfer a funds from the medical position to base level assistant supervisor to the federal department.
Girl, where else can I? Okay, I'm coming today, um, as y'all referred to last, last time, we have issues with, um, the allocations of funds within a budget. Different positions. So I'm, as this has, as Randall, so anyway, I'm coming today, uh, to ask for funding for an assistant supervisor in federal. To all the other departments and the local departments that had this for several years. Um, this one, uh, it was a divorce in this position about ten years ago, since then we had not gone. So it had gone, um, there were just, uh, normal deputies in there, there were six, uh, deputy courts plus a supervisor. And at this moment, we have a vacant position, that's why I'm thinking about the funding, uh, there's vacant position in the civils department. So I'm, I'm asking for funding from that position to move, um, uh, a normal at, at our highest level of, um, deputy court, which is thirty-three, sixty-five, to, uh, thirty-eight, four forty-four, which is assistant supervisor position. So that would be a transfer.
So this has been empty how long?
About four years.
Four years. Why do we say how long?
That's all you had, that's all you had left is four thousand dollars and that, and that goes to thirty years.
Thirty.
Thirty-eight.
Well, you know, we, if I, if I get it and we can vacate the position, you know, that's all.
So why, why did we, why have we voted that Carol on this year's?
Oh, it had been voted.
Oh, has it?
Oh, no, the criminal position after she left, it wasn't voted.
This lady's coming from, uh, in that position, Stephen, is that just?
Well, that's what. That's what, well, that's what we'll have in the, we'll come back.
So what will happen to the budget?
Well, I'm, I'm proposing to have that be a vacant position and to spread those funds, which is essentially fitting her dog to person, uh, to the rest of them. And I'll show you the, um, um, the salary, um, surveyor, the salary amount that we've paid.
Looking over and why and why?
Well, you know, we're talking about this.
And that's, that's huge, I'm saying, as an overall.
Well, and you didn't, you know, in normal times I could do this, but because of last year, you requested this, this is why I'm coming. I'm gonna show you positions of, uh, everyone in the county. And I've, I've got a handout of highlights, everyone is under thirty-five thousand. And it's Julie and I and. Yeah, I, I, I was, I was doing clerks in that, which with the clerk positions. Yeah, and, and so it's, it's a very few, but as I'm saying, if we vacated that position, it would be a fifteen thousand dollar, uh, step up.
So Caroline, would it be appropriate to pass this topic until we get to budget so that we have the full picture of what you're trying to do in that department?
You know, we can do that, but what I'm asking you is for that, because if you wait a lot of time in that, you won't cover.
No, I'm sorry, I meant budget, um, conversations this afternoon and tomorrow.
Sure, we can do that. But I want you to remember that we need this position and, you know, the sad thing is that, uh, for these four years, you know, if you go on with that, somebody gets in the, uh, supervisor, that whole parking town, you lose a lot of communication. And, uh, you know, we did a gear training with obviously, and we, you know, we just done, so, um, they're needing somebody whenever Crystal's gone on to, you know, step up. So, you know, we need to do it this way instead of people saying, oh, I did this one, you did this way. Anyway, that's what, yeah, sure, I can bring you that.
Okay, let's talk about that.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if you're on the schedule today or tomorrow.
I'm on.
But you are.
We do that kind of stuff during most legislative discussions. And we, yes, yeah, I mean, that's the whole purpose of budgets, to allocate money upon positions, size of position.
Size.
Well, uh.
I guess it's.
I guess it is too. Yeah, if immediate action is required, what you're gonna talk about this afternoon will, will begin, of course, up till approach, uh, as far as spending. So, so if, if there is a decision we made between now and Thursday, this item this morning is the one to tackle.
Is that good? Yeah, that's good. I mean, I can give you my whole handout and I'm sure y'all have positions.
I'd like to leave it from all the departments to. Oh, we have an open, uh, we have an open agenda, so we can come back if we decide to do that and move forward with action for this year, we could just come back to this.
If we're, yes, if we're not, if we're not adjourning, the meeting's over, something recesses again, and you can come back to this item.
Okay.
Number ten, Potter County Law Enforcement Complex Project Value Engineering Payment. Consider and approve compensation to the project architect, statement of its value engineering. Five.
I know that. I forgot this one. I'm pardon the George Quorum, but I forgot to sort of, I think back to a hundred and four, hundred and three, it's anything. I let it humor in my, for this special court. Okay, so, uh, we are wrapping, rapidly wrapping up the law enforcement complex project. I asked you to think, uh, just about everything that is done, how do we be able to see, sign itself right now? Mike tells me that demolition market is progressing well. And then there are after, uh, we've got the last phase, which is in the grasp back, but we're, uh, the old sheriff's building site and temporarily these, uh, hard type facility out of that. So we're in the process of wrapping that project up right now. One of the issues, the issues that you're, you're being asked to consider today, uh, a recommendation from the counties, about another county, uh, is to, let's, uh, begin shutting down the contract with architects. Uh, for the science services that they've provided during the course of that project. And if you recall, there was a provision in that contract allowed, which is basically an incentive, uh, provision, uh, to provide incentive for the architect to look for ways to bring the process of the project down to the county. Uh, for the county, and that has worked out very well. And I don't want to steal any of Carrie's thunder, she could tell you a little bit exactly how much money's gonna be coming back to the county. Uh, but initially, and I just, I hate to read stuff to you, but I'm gonna go ahead and read this so I can get it right legally, since we are being recorded. Uh, the provision basically says, if final construction cost based on the initial cost scope is below the owner's baseline construction cost of fifteen million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, the architect will receive additional compensation in the amount of twenty percent of the below baseline construction cost savings. So what was the baseline construction cost saving? Well, that was the figure that was approved or considered approved by this, this body in September, uh, let me get my dates right. September twenty-sixth. And if you'll recall, we needed to have that amount in order to put together the bond package for the entire project. So you had to have that as a basis for, uh, issuing bonds for the project. So between that day and nine months later, uh, that, the committee for, you know, their architects, Texas, were calibrating the cost of the project down and they brought it down significantly. When the bids finally came in, the four bids that were being considered most closely by, uh, the court and the county, uh, ranged anywhere from seven and a half to almost fifteen percent below the baseline, uh, amount that had been approved back in September. That was not approved. That was a result of the hard work of the committee, uh, led by architects who tried to find better ways to do the same thing that the sheriff's department needed at that facility, but at a lesser cost. And I don't want to, uh, take any away, anything away from, uh, the sheriff, because he was, that was his mindset to, he wanted to get the project done as inexpensively to the county as possible, but not do it so cheap that it wouldn't have the longevity that that facility needs to have as far as payout to the county. Uh, so he was not asking for gold spigots or anything like that. Uh, he just, I mean, there were decisions that had to be made on title materials used to do some things in some places. And not the glossy high-end stuff was used, but the, the sheriff decided that, that you get along well for things that were less expensive. Uh, and, and at the end of the day, uh, you know, when the bids finally came in, they're almost two million, a little over two billion dollars below the baseline amount that had been, uh, set by the county. Now, throughout the duration of the project, that value engineering work went up. Uh, and if you'll recall, back in July, uh, the court had almost eight hundred thousand dollars worth of additional work scopes to the project. Now, early on in this, uh, process, Mike had a discussion with Larry Percy and a lot of the costs that an architect would continue to, to pass on to the county during the course of work for change orders for any kind of redrawings or anything of that sort. They basically deferred that, understanding that there was this incentive, uh, feature, uh, to their contract. And in your, uh, agenda packed today, I don't know if you have an opportunity to read through all that, but there's a, there's a listing of some of the major instances where this value engineering provision came into play. And yielded almost, uh, almost one point two million dollars in savings overall to the project, either in doing work, value engineered for less expensively than what had originally been anticipated, or just a bird compass. Costs that could have been charged by, uh, Larry. In addition to this value engineering provision, he elected to forego charging the additional costs in lieu of the value engineering savings, almost in exchange for, uh, what you would have paid for anyway. Bottom line is, and I'll do the draw roll, I don't know if you're ready for this, Carrie, but you wouldn't, uh, we talked about this at the committee meeting on July tenth. And we have a fairly good estimate of how much money's gonna be going back to the county right now, uh, on those bonds. So what was that going to be?
Two point four million.
So about two point four million dollars will be coming back to the county on this project. Now, that was a team effort, is a team effort by everybody that's on the committee, including architects, to try to get this project done as inexpensively as possible and get it done right. And it's, it's being done right now largely, because it's all that handled there. But it's gonna be done right and it's gonna be done at almost a little over ten percent less than what was anticipated. So that's really a positive celebration for the county to get this wonderful project done, it's gonna last for at least twenty, twenty-five, thirty years and have it done as relatively inexpensively as it was. It's a lot of money, yes, it was, but it was done ten percent less, if not more than what had originally been anticipated. All that, you know, all that said, uh, the committee recommended that with this next application, that architects will be submitting that the county go ahead and compensate the company in accordance with their contract, uh, for value engineering savings. And that amount comes to, as you can see in your agenda of the day, about four hundred and two thousand dollars. But again, that's twenty percent of what he was able to save for the county through value engineering.
A couple of questions. Uh, so Carrie, what is our, what was our total cost for the whole project? I just wanna make sure I have my figures correct, so not that we're near the end.
Oh, we still have that one, we have that one outstanding, but, um, those come in true, true to the figure, it's nineteen point four.
At two point four million. And then the two point four air quote kind of savings, if you will, is that going to be sent to pay off the debt? Or is that a leave retaining that and doing something with that?
Once this project is complete, we'll bring that back to court and you'll make that decision.
Okay, all right. And so John, on, I'm looking at this page, I think it's page two of your document here. So I am familiar with value engineering. It's the same process that's being used on the MPF and I obviously sit on the LGC. So I have, um, I have been, uh, been able to be in that dialogue of what really is kind of value engineering. What was surprising to me on this document is had you not presented this as a value. What was surprising to me on this document is, had you not presented this as a value engineering win, I would have just categorized the majority of this as like business as usual, right? Like, I'm used to, when we define, uh, value engineering and someone trying to get that savings. Um, an example I'll give you is, they were planning to use this type of metal on whatever square footage, and they found a comparable type of metal that didn't cost much more for shipping, and so they brought that in and saved. Or they found a supplier that was much closer than they thought it was and saved money on transportation. Like, tho- those type of value engineering, when I saw things like a, a redundant chiller, a tornado shelter, uh, reducing a generator size, deleting a fire sprinkler system, those to me are just things that you figured out you didn't need once the project came up, not how I would define, like, true engineering schematic design and how you started the project. And then what I typically see is, when a company comes in to say, give me that twenty percent for the contract, they're usually some kind of out of the box thinking that you, you say, oh, well, yeah, I didn't even know that was an option. That's great. So, I was kind of surprised to, to see this. To me, this was like low level, business as usual, if you will. And I don't, I don't wanna, you know, categorize it as that, but I'm just, I'm interpreting on the outside. I do not sit on this committee.
Yeah, and, and, and there was, I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff, uh, that is abbreviated, I mean, this, this is abbreviated. A lot of this is abbreviated.
Like deleting fifteen trees?
Not, not everyone has had the vast experience that you've had, Mercy, but, um, the fact is, is, is that there's a lot of history behind each one of these elements as it was being moved about in the project. And as they went back, looked at designs with the committee's input and said, yeah, maybe we don't need that, that portion of the sprinkler system. You know, you can certainly go in with it, but if you don't need it there as discussions were had, uh, then it's something that we can eliminate from the project. And as you eliminate from the project, then you bring down the cost of the project.
And I, and I, and I would say, yes, that is typical business practices of, hey, we wanna delete this rainwater collection. That's forty-five thousand in here. Okay, the committee decided to do that, that's fine, I'm not in that detail, but I, I'm not used to an engineering company saying, add that, add this to my value engineering bucket, right? That's, um, I'm used to more creative solutions, whether it's a transportation, whether it's material, whether it's a, a type of rendering they thought was gonna be at this angle, and now it's this angle. You know, I'm, I'm used to those kind of things, especially when an engineer is coming back to say, give me that extra twenty percent, if you will, and in this case, close to a half a million. So, I, I just, I wanted to share that for what it's worth.
I guess bottom line is still it's a two point, uh, savings. It, it is, and, you know, uh, I also work with a lot of architects that they, the incentives to decrease the cost of the property, not decrease the cost of the property, because as the project goes up, so that's their fee.
But I think we've been right by architects, right? This is a partner we've had a long time, so.
Yeah, and, and, and that's why.
They've done well at Potter County.
They, they have, and they have, and I think part of that has to do, I mean, you've got a relationship with them for a reason. And the relationship is because you trust them. And, you know, partnership is each partner does right by the other's partner. And so, again, uh, I, I go back to the time when I sat and listened to Larry and Mike talking about this, and Larry and Mike basically said, okay, you guys, we've got this in the contract, so we're not gonna be nickel and dime. We're not gonna be nickel and dime, and Larry said, you're right, you're not gonna be nickel and dime. And that's why a lot of the change orders, and most of the change orders, all of, one of those change orders, that, that the only one, that, the exception, the very first. The county only paying for the southern suburbs and none of the time that architects is invested in that change order. Uh, and that's, well, that's part of what a partnership involves is, I don't pay, and you're giving something, we're giving something. I think at the end of the day, again, I know it sounds trite, but I think everybody has cause for celebration here, because you accomplished, this court accomplished what it set out to do. And will be able to put better than ten percent of the money back on something that's whatever you all decide. And, you know, could have gone the other way.
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I wanted to share that expertise on the LGC level. I, I feel like we have been a good partner to architects, so I'll just say that as my baseline. I've talked to Larry personally over the years, so I, I feel like we're there. We've done that gentleman's handshake, if you will. I'm just not used to an engineer bringing this grocery list and defining them as value engineering. I'm used to some top line, not removing trees, not raining water. I mean, this is a half a million dollars of taxpayer money. Let's be clear about that, so. But, I'll be quiet. I'm just getting ready, but I'm sorry.
Move to the, move to the compensation to the private, the same period.
Cherry.
Motion, second on favor. All votes. Thank you, John. Subdivision flat approvals to consider for approval, subdivision flats, submitted for Prairie West states twenty nine thirteen, Prairie West, registered in fourteen, and Eden Park, in number one. Good morning.
Good morning. On Prairie West, number thirteen, and Prairie West, fourteen, those existing subdivisions, uh, existing flat lots that they wanted to be split into different sizes, uh, were set to be replaced. So, they're, they're pretty straightforward. Uh, Eden Park, uh, new maybe three lots, so there's a lot of new ones in Bushland, uh, and this is gonna add to it.
So, the, uh, Prairie West Estates is just.
The Prairie West Estates, they, we did those, uh, they did those commercial lots on I forty, five acres plus. And now with the new, the way the health department is viewing the separate permits, if you go in and take a five acre lot and make it a one acre lot and a four acre lot, it requires replating. Versus selling the west one acre and retaining the east four. So, that, that's what the Prairie West are. They're just, they were both five acre lots, and now we split them into, uh, a one acre, a four acre, and a two and a half acre.
So, I can have them as eighty lots in Prairie West. Does that number now change based on the way you're splitting it?
Um, Prairie West is.
Oh, I'm sorry, Prairie South, I have as eighty lots.
So, Prairie South is on the south side of I forty, uh, Prairie West is on the north side of I forty. These are existing ones that I had approved, uh, oh gosh, three or four years ago. Uh, they're just those bigger commercial lots that have taken time to, to sell, and people decided they want five acres, they want to make them.
On the Eden Park, yes. Does any of that property name within the ETJ?
Of the unit we are doing now, no. Of the entire master plan proposal, yes. Uh, we've started adjacent, we started on the east end, we started on the west end, we're working our way east. Uh, right now, twenty-five percent of that section roughly is within the ETJ, so we're a couple of years from getting there. I mean, unless things are sold, but.
Do you think we can get some exemptions on that?
I have done everything I can to attempt to get some exemptions on that, including working with, with, uh, Potter County, who's been doing a master plan proposal, uh, to deal with that. It's their own requirements. Their own requirements are ridiculous for, excuse me, but they are for, for what we're doing there, yes. I just, well, and we, and we had this discussion with the city at the very beginning about can we get an exemption now? And we were told, no. And I said, okay, that being the case, let's look at this alternate route of doing a section master plan, defining where their rides end in the Potter County's weekend now, and we'll start on one side and work together.
So, the ask for today is the subdivision flats for Prairie West?
I, I have three.
Unit thirteen, fourteen, and then?
And then Eden Park, yes, ma'am.
So, will they all be commercial or real estate?
So, um, Prairie West, thirteen and fourteen are the commercial lots, yes, ma'am. And then Eden Park is.
I'm sorry, light cur- commercial or heavy commercial?
Honestly, I don't know.
There's the.
Uh, they're, they're, they're on I forty, and there's no, no zoning regulations out there to define what they can or can't do. Um, but they are the, they're, a part of Prairie West, eleven, which was a commercial, entirely commercial subdivision that we did. Uh, they were just taking a couple of those lots and making them smaller.
Okay.
So, whatever commercial aspect of it they're gonna sell to, I don't know.
Okay. And then the Eden?
Eden Park is the residential subdivision, and we've got eighty-three lots in unit one.
So, Sebastian, how does that work with the new roads? Eighty-three lots?
I'll find out tomorrow when I get up the boardroom.
That was our warning, John. So, eighty-three more lots. Commissioner Turgeon, I'm gonna lean on you. I think our last time we talked about, oh, I'm gonna say it was Legacy Ranch, but I could have it wrong. Um, alternate ways of funding, what I put in my notes, as we continue, this is not gonna change, right? This topic's, they're gonna keep coming. Bushland is not incorporated.
Keep coming.
Yes.
I have nothing to say on that, I'm also on alternate, alternative thinking, that they have to be approved by both voters, and I think at some point, maybe we oughta have someone come and talk to us about those different alternatives. I, I'm not an expert on those. But anyway, I, go ahead.
Go ahead, please, sir.
I'm just ready to move.
I do have a couple of questions, 'cause that does set, I mean, eighty-three lots is adding to what we've already added just this year. Um, what's the price range for the eighty-three lots? What type of, uh, price range for the residential side?
I'm the surveyor, I'm not the seller, so I don't wanna second that.
Well, I mean, I feel like we're doing this a little backwards, in particular on the residential, not so much on the commercial, but on the Eden Park one. Eighty-three lots is not something to take lightly in addition to what we've been excited.
I don't know how you, you had not approved this.
Yeah.
After you've approved all the others in that.
I, I think, and we, we, as a firm, we have done, and it's, we've done some, some cost analysis, not that it's within, it's not within my purview as a shirt. But as a firm in developing the number of lots that we are for the different developers in Potter and Randall County, we have looked at the sustainability of, you know, these houses that are being built out there and the tax, the new roads and the way they're being built, and the, the ability to not have to really maintain them for three to five years before they, before they start needing something, offsets the taxes that are being generated. And I don't have a dollar figure for you, other than, than we, we talked to commissioners before about this subject, and then just rough, you know, okay, so we're gonna build a two hundred and fifty thousand yard house, and the tax base on that is times eighty-three is times however many linear feet we have.
Right.
Uh, and the cost of that is X, and, and we've never run a scenario where we weren't leaving the county better off than where we started.
Yeah, and I think that's the one piece of it. Uh, we then had to expand, uh, fire protection, police forces, so there's other, you know, other pieces that holistically, I think, the county looks at. So, I think that's probably right for their lane, saying, here's what we're bringing to the base and.
Well, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have a corner set aside for Potter County's fire department.
Oh, interesting, so there's already.
Yes. In this unit one, I mean, here and now.
Has someone already had that discussion on the city?
Yes.
Nice.
No, well, we want to talk back to logic.
Apologize.
Well, that's, that's the thing, when you bring in.
Right, but all of these things down the road ultimately file to the taxpayer, and if we don't all holistically have the same look, we're gonna make mistakes.
But why would we say you can't do this? This is a, this is a boon for, for Bushland, it's a boon for us.
Right.
Why would we say no?
I, I'm not saying we would say no to this development, potential development. I'm saying we need to be extremely mindful, but then that brings other conversations. We are setting the tone, and they are not an incorporated city. I've said that for quite some time. Bushland, uh, is growing, it's fantastic. I spend time over there. It's wonderful to go there. It's a beautiful part of an extension to Amarillo, right? But it's, uh, I feel like they're in this in-between stage where they want city amenities, but not be incorporated. And so, that rolls to the county, and can we really sustain that? That's, I think, the ultimate question, and it starts with these small residential builds. And we want them, absolutely. That's, it's a good problem, but for us to just continue to say, well, we've done it, we did the other eighty, we did the other eighty-eight, we did Silver Point, we did Prairie, uh, Legacy Ranch, there was eighty-eight lots there. I mean, it's this nickel and dime thing, and then all of a sudden, we have four hundred lots, and no one thought about.
Yeah, but we're, you assume that our revenue stays the same. Our revenue will not stay the same. When you add value to a property, our revenue is going to increase.
Right, but the needs all over the county are growing too.
And the, and the value of their properties are probably going up, so. I mean, we, you can beat your head against the wall on this, but it's.
And you, you can tell me I'm, I'm out of line here, but I think Potter County is in a better situation than, say, looking at this from, from the development side of that look at it, Potter County is not boxed in for development.
Correct. That's good.
That's good, because that's the only way we can derive tax revenue. Um, A I S D is boxed in, they're done. City of Amarillo is this close to being done. Uh, a couple more subdivisions that we've got lined up, and they really have no place to go. So, the only aspect of being able to derive new tax base is this type of development. For, for Potter County.
I'm really excited about your commercial. Because, you know, we just passed the, uh, the county district. And that's gotta be nothing but a help to our revenue, so. Anyway, I remember that we approved, approved the, uh, Prairie West Estates, number thirteen, Prairie West Estates, unit, uh, fourteen, Eden Park, unit number one for development.
The motion, and second on favor.
And just for the record, not opposing the development component. If we just have very strategic discussions, we need to have, and we're not having them. I mean, they're having them inside us. I wanna make sure that people have good services.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. To be, to be clear, the issue, when it's item like this, come for approval to the subdivision flat, the only question is whether it meets the statute of rights. Whether it's a policy idea, good idea, it doesn't matter. You may demand us to approve the flat, it's a terrible idea. So, uh, just, just to be sure, now, we're talking, I think budget is the proper place for concern. And I think that's what we're talking about.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, number twelve, boots and badges events are considered for approval, request help with badges, that brings me to Potter County, state.
Nicholas, you're gonna speak on this?
Sure. I didn't put my time.
I didn't know you had time.
I've got. Suzanne Sally, I'll take you, is she here?
No, I thought she would be there, she's not.
Uh, I got in touch with her, basically, her, my colleague, with Sanjita Melvin, kinda been talking, she's left him to have, uh, stadium on August eleventh, but you and I talked, if it comes forward, you guys make sure you're all okay with it. Uh, the cost to us would be manpower, putting toilet flush valves back in place, and we're gonna run it, so, uh, that's really all that the cost to us, uh.
We're gonna have the lighting.
The lighting is good. She's gonna furnish a few light bulbs for the bar area that she did that last year.
We're gonna have the inbuilt lights. He's paying for that. Last year, Kelly Ellis did it.
That falls under, Sanjita, I, we don't, because Potter County doesn't pay those, so.
Okay.
I assume she's worked that out, and, uh, the water bill, you know, every, everything is under that lease, other than. He has to get approval from the commission.
For subsidies.
So, that's, it's no different than last year.
Okay.
She just wants to have a minute, and, uh.
August eleventh, is that where I'm recording?
It is.
When's our next commission?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. She, she didn't know she had to notify Potter County.
Okay.
Well, she said she did not know she had to notify Potter County.
Do you wanna weigh up on this?
No, I don't think we have to do it, we do it every year, so-
I make a motion that we approve holding the boots and badges event at Potter County go real soon.
Sure.
A motion and a second on the favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number thirteen, Enterprise, I'll lose contact, considered for approval and master equity lease agreement with Enterprise, if in trust or association by these certain vehicles, count operations. Perfect, county.
Great, thank you again for having me. I didn't know whether the county attorney helped us out, or how you all worked to-
Feel free, yeah, who ever wants to go first, go ahead.
Go right. No, as I understand it, the purpose of today is to approve the agreement, not to talk about, you know, quantities of vehicles or accounts of, of dollars, you know, for the county's, and so, if you have any questions, but again, at this point, the attorney and county attorney and our legal counsel have gone back and forth and come up with some items to the agreement that were set, that I'm understanding to county attorney. So today, we're here in person to answer questions and make sure that we're in a partnership. But again, it's not about, I know today is a lot about budgeting, and so, just want you to know, it's not about-
Like, don't quit me with that. Scott, in terms of the back and forth, can you add any visibility into what, what that was? What are things in the agreement that seem to be requested to be removed, or help you understand the back and forth?
Well, unfortunately, probably asking the wrong guy, it's Ted.
Okay.
But there were, I, there were provisions, in my, my understanding, I, I looked at them, the life margin of tax, a few of them, things like choice of law provisions, indemnity provisions, things that we typically do not, either cannot or do not rule, in contrast, or subdivision. I think what I've seen, we're talking, had those concerns, been satisfactorily mediated.
Hey, Carrie, this is our first year of doing this, I'm interested in your take about it, you've been a little time, still the right direction to go?
Well, I think that purchasing has some issues between, we need to at least bring to light or concerns, I should say, especially about the insurance and inventory and that type of thing, do you want to?
I'm just not really sure, this is totally changing from what the history of the county's done, so I'm not sure, I get a lot, I'm getting a lot of questions, can we add additional equipment, I mean, when it's, when it's, you know, interbidder, does that mean I can go to my current body shop, there's just, I don't know if it's gonna have to, purchasing will, I'm not saying I'm totally, it's just, I'm unclear, because I, I don't know how that's going to work, so just saying, we may not have, purchasing's always the go-to people to answer every question, and insurance, it's kind of really, you know, I'm not experienced in this type of project, so, other than the, you know, I know experience with Enterprise and the rental car program, but not in a leasing pool. So Steve mainly just, he couldn't be here today, he was not sure either, all the different things, the process he decided to do, the, like, he's been working with Ted, the certain standard agreements, you know, I don't know whether, you know, once a vehicle is, can we, when it's destroyed, and how, how much of delay is it gonna be to get another one back in service from the sheriff's office? Pretty much got everything as a fine art now, if you know exactly the timing and all that, and I, I'm just not quite sure.
So it sounds, you're on the buy board contract, if I remember right, it's the rate, if I remember, when I asked about the rate question, the other counties that do this?
Yes.
So it sounds like maybe an operational meeting is in order to figure out the weather scenarios, I assume that happened before this agreement?
Well, I apologize, 'cause no, I, I'm not aware of those specific insurance questions that we need to go over, because I thought that we, again, again-
Yeah, I'm just trying to see how we handle those, I, I just, my angle is that logistics that I'm gonna have to work through, so before approves this, then I'm just gonna have to have, you know, see where my staff, if it's coming out more time, I've got-
It should.
Just those type of things, timing, how long is a plane that it takes, now I know exactly how long the plane's gonna take, we can get, get that turnaround pretty good. I don't know how that's gonna-
And, and I'll, I will add to that, I think, but, the question, or the related insurance, with every county, I've heard, their insurance process has not changed.
Okay.
And, and it really legitimately is whatever you currently do, because all we're doing is providing you with that, that vehicle, or maintaining it and managing it, right? So insurance is not changing, because you all are still insured in the exact same line. So your plane's process, you don't even really need to notify Enterprise unless there's a total loss and you replace it. If it's some sort of repairs that you're going to have done, then you continue the process the same exact way you currently do. Enterprise doesn't have a real estate in that, other than knowing that, for example, when you return a vehicle for us to sell, we're gonna sell that vehicle at your half, and you're gonna get equity in that vehicle. Right, so again, if you're repairing vehicles and, and maintaining them, or repairing vehicles the way you normally do, that'll be fine. If there's a total loss, then really what it comes down to is, are we factored ordering that replacement vehicle? And that's a choice for the county, and we will be able to show you options, meaning, do we go to availability pool, like, for example, a cat fleet outfit, or some combo country, which is part buy board, we grab a vehicle from their inventory, different than what you currently, than what you currently do, or if the inventory's not there, then we would factored order a vehicle, but of course, it would be a decision for the county. So really, the, the timeline and the process of insurance isn't really gonna change, but there is a point person within Enterprise that would be assigned to the county, and I would wanna get that person in touch with you to make sure that they answer all your remaining questions. But again, that, the insurance base should not change.
Okay. And I guess moving forward strategically, would we, once we go for this route, and let's say two, two to five years, you decide that this is not where you wanna go, we have no meaning, so, they all go back?
They have, so it turns out, we actually, oh, I don't have in this agreement?
Yeah, so, this is an equity lease agreement, so it's not, for example, a dealership lease, or, you know, again, those are essentially long-term rentals, right? In, in, in those cases, because you're, you're returning the vehicle, it's just fine, period of time, details, and damage, et cetera. This is essentially a creative way to fund vehicles, right? So you're funding it over, you know, two years for C I B request, or five years for the regular, you know, your ship's office vehicles, or for other departments. Because of the way Enterprise and the county already buys vehicles, so you're very, at a low price, you're in an equity position pretty quickly out the gate, right, when you're acquiring new vehicles. So as you pay down the depreciation, and you're paying down that vehicle, if, if, let's say you decided to, to end this partnership, then you could either do a, a few things, right? You could just continue making the payments on those vehicles until they, until a point of those particular units that you've already agreed to acquire through Enterprise, until that term runs out. Or at that time, you could say, Enterprise, you know, we want to sell those vehicles, and we don't need them anymore, and we'll go get our own. Or you could say, Enterprise, we wanna buy those vehicles based on what the, what the value is, or what the payoff price is. And the payoff will always be, in this case, less than what you owe, because of the fact that you're already acquiring an association. So there are options there, I've not, you know, I wouldn't have had the government to leave us, you know, and, and part ways with us, but again, if you did choose to do that, the most common way, even in a commercial setting with the companies that we work with, is to continue those leases until the point that their, their lease run, runs out. Because again, the government or the county itself is not committing to further acquisitions to Enterprise, it's only the ones that, if you chose to, you know, to move forward on vehicles this year, it would be for those vehicles in their particular term, nothing beyond.
So it sounds like to me, it's one thing, the commissioners are, you all are interested in both fleet, or some of them, or we're gonna be kind of having a hybrid, I'm gonna have some, and how the inventory, that's something logistically Carrie and I would have to work through, is, and we said, how will we put them on our inventory? Because these are ones we don't, so that's another thing that we have to try to work through that process to say, these others, or these particular vehicles are leased, these are, so it's gonna be very, very back and forth, and hey, when someone wrecks, we've gotta figure out that we own it, so that's another thing. But we can work through these, I'm just, I'm just saying so.
So is it pressing that we take action on the master agreement today? Or I, I, part of me feels like the group should meet and vet through some of this, because I, I don't have a lot of confidence in our process at this moment, outside of contractual, I'm sure that's perfectly fine, you guys have vetted that, but-
I think the main concern, Carrie and I have talked about this meeting, is the budget, trying to make a decision on the budget. So I know, you know, Kirby and Carrie and, you know, support of my staff, that we can work through this process, but, because I'm just asking that, there are some things that maybe Kirby, myself, and Carrie don't know, it's just, and we get to this point, that that's what the commissioners decide, it's not something you can really say that it's gonna be real smooth at first, but we, we can work through that.
Do you have an option? Well, I think it has to be a move-in process, it can be all along.
Right, and I would be sure you're not involved.
But, a question to you is, I was a little concerned at our estimated annual mileage, ten thousand five hundred miles, not pretty much.
And, sorry, go ahead. I was gonna say that, based on the data that you all provided, your average price is around that ten-five, ten-five, and that's not on the sheriff's side. So that's specifically talking about, other than on the sheriff.
Right.
Those are more eighteen, there is no penalty, it's the rate in which I depreciate, right? And, and it's also on the non-sheriff units, so maintenance is included, all preventative and unscheduled, so microblades, engine transmissions, oil changes, et cetera, is included on all of your non-perceived vehicles. So that is the, the, for example, that ten thousand five hundred average is the, is the, the number of years to calculate what that maintenance expense is going to be for Enterprise, and that's how we determine what is, you know, what, what that is going to be for the county. There is no mileage restriction, so if, if you return, you know, again, five years, you return the vehicle to a hundred thousand dollars, it's simply gonna be worth less than the vehicle goes, you know, at thirty-five thousand. But of course, that's where your accounting comes in, and it's helping, you know, decide which vehicles you're gonna wear. But to answer your question on, on the contractual side of it, if you approve the partnership, again, the, the master equity lease agreement, if you're not approving to lease vehicles, you're simply approving that, based on the contractual structure, that, that the county attorney has gone through with Enterprise and our legal side, that y'all are comfortable with that. And then what I've been going back and forth with, with Carrie on, is the quantities of vehicles, the aftermarket, the outfit, I've had a few departments come and ask me different questions this morning prior to, to court, so that's an ongoing discussion, which I know that you all are having, you know, today and throughout the week, but it's not something that you're committing to with this, with this budget, or with this quarter.
Yeah, I'd just say, Heather, was it, if we sign this, we're not committing to any of these, not any of these.
Yeah, Ted and I had that conversation late last week, and, and that gave me more comfort, because of not saying, hey, all of our fleet as October one is gonna be straight over, but-
And you also have plenty to make, I can provide you with plenty of references for everybody purchasing, and, and, you know, operational components for other counties that we work with, so that's becoming one of them, and, you know, most of the-
Because if there's cost savings, I wanna, I wanna get on that, for, for, if that's, if this is an option, and, and it saves the county money by not buying those vehicles, and, once again, you know, we will have, and I think you guys understand that as commissioners, that I'll have two systems going on for a while.
I will make a motion that we approve a master equity lease agreement with Enterprise and interest for acquisition by lease of certain vehicles as determined by the court.
Sure.
I have a motion and a second on the favor. Four to zero.
Thank you. Will you be with us throughout the day? Well, I know we expect you to stay with us too.
I will be for budget, but again, I'm, I'm available, I'm working with Carrie to, to get this resolved. Thank you.
And number fourteen, Excel easement, Excel bed building to consider for approval and request from Excel for easement, underground property to facilitate installation of underground electrical service and upgraded service to the same building.
Hi, excellent, you're back. Thank you, Carrie.
I don't think Mr. Ritchie's gonna make it, I don't know much, quite busy. Mike was approached with this, and kind of turned it over to me, basically, it's a, a plan that Excel put into play, cleaned up their infrastructure, all the wires and all the transformers that had been outing throughout downtown, going through, sorry, Redfield Stadium, in underground electrical service, to feed these, these large buildings down town on into just the, the older part, all, all the way down.
Levens.
The, the, I did, I didn't tell you. Anyhow, it's zero cost to Potter County, there's an easement form in there, had booked over everything, and said it was great, they wanted to go, of course, to court. The easement is, is a little bit misleading, it's actually an underground easement, so if you're literally in Santa Fe building, there are all of the maintenance group parks and purchasing, right along that alley, the Eden will be underground from tenth to ninth, that's what that line is, is so they can directionally work and run their new service from the AT&T building on tenth, behind the chamber, over to our building, and we will be given one parking spot in that alley, instead of new transformer on the ground, and they'll go into the building and tie it to our service.
The only question I have, Brandon, I know something you have in your budget is a site survey for all of our lines, how comfortable do we feel that our lines are marked underground from an IT perspective in that area? And maybe we don't have lines there, just-
Um, we do, you know, we do have some-
Because if things happen in Potter County, all the time.
Yes, they do, yeah.
Do we feel comfortable? And if not, I would assume that we're gonna be working with our IT, and, it happened last time, that's just the truth.
Yeah, we just need to, I mean, make sure we have marked it really well.
And you'll be reaching out to them, or they'll be reaching out to you?
Sure. Yeah, once, once they put in the ticket that they're digging, we get the order on that stuff, so, yeah.
Recently just had IT, the project that came in, and they ran down that alley toward into our building, they marked what they found, AT&T, Q, down the morning, and then it'll come out, they've already done some, anything that's, that's damaged, if anything damaged, we'll be on them to, to repair.
And anybody sent for this upgrade? I mean, I'm assuming this with the downtown development, all of that happening?
Their infrastructure is from the twenties, you know, how old these buildings are, these, transformers that, that provide power, they're, they're old, they contain harmful chemicals in the installation, they're unreliable.
Why have we had it so long?
Because nobody wants to, to pay for it, you know, to, to do that. This really started after we had explosion in Santa Fe building on the transformers beneath the sidewall, can you switch here to bring in the building, I think we've been in the building three years. Right after that, Excel wanted to come in and remove the transformers, I'm sure who all was on the court at that time, they wanted Potter County to pay them to come and take their own transformers out, and said no. So that's really what this is about too, is to clean them up, get them out of there.
And Mike, I remember you saying the last time, you briefed us on this, is coordination with the family support services fundraiser, that over the edge, was, did this have something to do with it?
No.
When they were starting this work, and the over the edge fundraiser, they're not this one?
Not this one.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
I make a motion that we approve the easement request from Excel Energy for underground Potter County property to facilitate installation of underground electrical service and upgraded service to the same building.
Sure.
I have a motion and a second on the favor. Four to zero. Thank you.
Number fifteen, report on bail bond litigation, your report from John Stixson, Dixon, Chair of Potter County, Attorney at Law, regarding status of law litigation in Texas.
Good morning.
Good question. Thank you, members. This request is triggered by a presentation y'all had two weeks ago concerning a law that was called a course advice release program, and you had some folks you were gonna take to county, you were gonna talk to, that, that were one of the things that they were asking for, was providing for additional positions, and to grow a program that would release more defendants on personal bond rather than requiring that they have sure reasons on. And so I asked to be placed on the agenda, because a couple of times during that discussion, there were mentions about the litigation that Harris County has, that specifically that I want to talk to you about. There's a lot of misunderstanding about what was involved in that litigation, what the results have been, and what the effects have been upon the criminal justice system, so it's each one of those three things that I want to talk to you about. The original theory of the case was that it was a constitutional violation for any person to be required to stay in jail, pre-tr-. The original theory of the case was that it was a constitutional violation for any person to be required to stay in jail pre-trial all the way to their trial date if they did not have the financial resources to make whatever the bond was that had been set in place. That was the theory that prevailed at the trial court level. And when she initially entered her injunction back in April of last year, her theory was that if someone with limited means spent even one day in jail longer than someone else who had more money, that violated the Constitution. And she entered an injunction then that said, within the first twenty-four hours after all misdemeanor arrests, the defendant must be given an opportunity to execute an affidavit that says, I'm too poor to make whatever bail has been set. And they must be released by the sheriff on an unsecured hearing bond at the twenty-four hour mark. End of story. It went further to say that if that person were subsequently arrested, either because they failed to appear in court, because they committed a new offense, as long as that new offense was still at the misdemeanor level, they had to be given an opportunity to execute such an affidavit again. And once again, be escorted to the door at the twenty-four hour mark. Well, not surprisingly, there have been a lot of results of that. Harris County took an appeal up to the Fifth Circuit, was argued in October of last year. And on February fourteenth of this year, the Fifth Circuit upheld the entry of an injunction, but on an entirely different legal theory than what had been held at the trial court level. And so what they said was that anytime there's a release on bail, there inevitably are at least two interests that are in conflict. The state's interest in making sure that people show up to trial, the defendant's interest in wanting to have himself or herself out of custody, get on about their lives until their trial date happens. Those are always in conflict, but neither trumps the other. And then the effect of the trial court's order was that the defendant's interest always trumped the state's interest. And the circuit rejected that argument. Instead, what they said was, what was at issue when someone says, I'm too poor to make whatever bail has been accepted, or has been set? What is at interest is a due process interest and having an individualized consideration of all of the factors that ought to go into a release on bail. And our state law sets out five factors. It says in Article seventeen fifteen of the Code Criminal Procedure, sufficiently high to make sure someone shows up, powered to require bail not to be an instrument of oppression, nature of the offense, and circumstances under which it was committed, the ability to make bail, and proof can be taken on that point, and the future safety of the victim of the alleged offense and the community. So factors like prior failures to appear, seriousness of offense, threats to victims, threats to the community. All, and financial resources are all factors that are to be considered. Now, the Fifth Circuit upheld the entry of an injunction, not because of the trial court's original theory, but because as a matter of fact, the court found, as the trial court had found, that in Harris County, there were preset bail amounts, and they never deviated, and they never gave defendants an opportunity to present any information that was personalized as to them. But they ordered that the original injunction be set aside and a drastically modified injunction be placed in its place. And so now, the modified injunction has been entered. This is to take effect at the end of this month, and it now would require that at the twenty-four hour mark after arrest, if someone says, I'm too poor to make whatever the scheduled amount of bail is, that they be given an opportunity to execute an affidavit that talks about their financial picture, their assets, their income, their dependence, what their bills are, what their resources are for family and friends. And that if they swear to that affidavit containing those kinds of facts, it is to be reviewed by the magistrate. And within forty-eight hours after arrest, the magistrate must hopefully hear where that information, as well as facts and circumstances of the offense are. Then the magistrate then makes a decision. Now, the magistrate might say at the end of that decision, the scheduled bail limit is exactly right, and we'll leave it there. Use a surety bond, put it up in full cash, but I think that would go out on any other form. They might say, you know what, based on all that stuff that I've heard, I'm going to lower the bail amount and leave it at a surety. Or they might say, I'm going to cut you loose on a personal. They might say, we're going to set some conditions, ankle monitor, ear analysis, whatever it might be, on any form of bond that might be authorized. Whatever the form of the lease that's been authorized by the magistrate at the conclusion of that forty-eight hour hearing, they simply have recite in the record what their reasons were. And that's, that will satisfy the process. There is one further part of the revised order, which says that if a defendant fails to agree, they have the right within twenty-four more hours to take an appeal up to county court. They have one more judge to look at. Bottom line is that as long as a county is making these kinds of individualized decisions about bail, they're not at risk under the Harris County litigation. It is only when the county treats every single defendant exactly the same, ignores some of these factors here. Well, in talking to the Potter County bondsman, it appears to me that Potter County does exactly what the Fifth Circuit is requiring Harris County to do.
I was going to ask, would we, you know, if we are to put those.
Well, it's difficult to answer that question very well, certainly, because it varies. Of course, the keystone figure here is magistrate.
That's right.
Some judges are more attentive to that perhaps than others. Now, in our experience at misdemeanor level, most of our magistrations are by Judge Jones, who I think is fairly attentive to those decisions. But there are situations where other judges are hearing that I can't really definitively tell you. Whatever happens, you should know from the last presentation, both of us were going to tell you. The judges are the, are the key players in this scenario.
No, and I was going to say, it was triggered with a certain, our concern that maybe that was the last, you know, area of compliance that.
Well, one thing I would add, that the Fifth Circuit, such to my consternation, left undisturbed in their review, Judge Rosenbaum's analysis of the case, was their idea that a judge can, in some circumstances, constitute a county policymaker, which could render the county liable for municipal liability intersection activities. That, that's something of a sea change in the law. Typically, a judge hearing a case is not a county policymaker. They're in federal courts and state law. But in this case, again, it points back to how critical it is to have the judges on board with whatever happens.
You're saying because now the county's accounts are tied to the changes.
The tension.
The potential. But we always plan the potential.
Right.
That changes the dynamic.
Right. Years and years ago, early in my legal career, I was a JP and I did the magistrations once every five weeks. And in every case, when I did those magistrations, they were one-on-one, me with the defendant, talking through whatever the facts and circumstances were. And I had the probable cause affidavit in office or court, and they had an opportunity to talk to me about that individual circumstances. Now, those don't have to be lengthy, they might be ten minutes, might be, might be less than that. But every single one of those defendants got that kind of individual consideration. And in my view, at least under this Fifth Circuit case, as long as the county is doing that, there is no basis for either suing or succeeding in bringing a fight against the county based on this common case. But I would like to point out to you what the result has been of the Fifth Circuit's, I'm sorry, of the trial court's preliminary injunction. And that injunction has been on the ground since June sixth of twenty seventeen. And I have, I've got multiple copies in my, in fact, because it does to y'all different parts.
Thank you.
This is an affidavit from a recent filing in the Fifth Circuit by the county. This is an affidavit from Ed Wells, who is the director of the Office of Court Administration in Harris County. So they track what's been going on for all of the courts and have been for years and years and years. So between the dates of June sixth of twenty seventeen and April thirtieth of twenty eighteen, for eight, roughly eight, eleven months for court appearances, they tracked what's been the result of four different types of bonds. Unsecured bonds, which are those ordered by the trial court, cut loose to twenty-four hours without paying any money. Secured bonds, that is those where there is a surety on the bond. Full cash bonds and personal bonds of the traditional nature, which are those that are interviewed by the county, recommended, approved by the court. So here's what the disaster has been for the criminal justice system. There were seventeen thousand seven hundred twenty-nine defendants cut loose on these three months at the twenty-four hour mark. And, I'm sorry, those were, seventeen thousand were on secured bonds, that is surety bonds. And of those, seventeen hundred seventy-seven failed to appear. So an FTA rate of roughly ten percent. Unsecured bonds, the three bonds, twelve thousand five seventy-seven, and of those, six thousand two hundred one failed to appear. So nearly half of those defendants failed to appear in court after they were cut loose. Cash bonds, twenty-four fifty-two approved, and three hundred eighty-eight of those forfeited for failing to appear, or an FTA rate of fifteen point eight two. And then even of those suret, of those personal bonds, recommended by and supervised by their pre-trial release office, fourteen thousand eight hundred thirty-five were approved and three thousand nine hundred fifty-six failed to appear, a total of twenty-six point six seven. I can guarantee you that when I was a judge, if I'd had half of my defendants not showing up on my dock, that would be a problem for me. And it has been a real problem for the misdemeanor courts, as a result of which there has been a new appeal taken up to the Fifth Circuit, signed off on by fourteen of the sixteen misdemeanor judges. It's just been a disaster for them. It shouldn't be surprising that there would be that kind of result. But when people willy-nilly are simply cut loose without regard for their personal history, without regard for the seriousness of the offense, their prior criminal offenses, it should not be surprising that many of them do not show up at the court, and that's been the result. So if you're considering expanding that form of release in the county, you should just go into it with open eyes. That every single time I have ever seen a study, looking at these kinds of releases, comparing the different forms of releases, we see the average appear rates on these personal bonds in the range of twenty-five to fifty percent, just pretty consistently. Just we've had it on the criminal justice system. In the particular case in Harris County, over this eleven months, you've now had roughly ten thousand defendants who are leased on personal bonds, either the unsecured ones or the traditional personal bonds who do not show up, which means ten thousand cases have been reset, ten thousand warrants have had to be issued. Sheriff's Department has another ten thousand warrants to have to execute, and you have ten thousand defendants who've had their day in court. Once again postponed because defendants weren't there to face the court of justice.
And have you aggregated that figure to a typical population? Like ten thousand means different to Potter County than it does Harris County. You have an aggregator in there, or you're just saying in a broad stroke?
No, I'm saying in Harris County, that's been the result. I mean, Harris County has roughly fifteen to fifty-five thousand misdemeanor cases per year. Go through them. And so all of them, some, most of them are released with fewer help because they might have other reasons to hold them until trial. But the percentages and, and for the various forms of release are pretty consistent county to county. Even in the presentation you heard last week, or two weeks ago, I'm sorry, which was a very, very narrow set of defendants. They talk to you about a failure rate of twenty percent. And so again, that's a very consistent result when somebody doesn't have any skin in the game. They're far less likely to show up if they have a problem.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Dixon has a couple of things to do with that.
Hey, how are you? Well, good morning. Thank you for letting me speak to you a little bit about bail in Texas, but more specifically here in Potter County. My name is Josh Dixon. You know who I am, I'm with Bell Bonds and Fairytale. I own Market and Dixon Bell Bonds. I've been in the business for about ten years. And we as an industry have not done a good job of letting you, our elected officials, know what we do and really the benefit we provide to the county. So that's what I'm going to do today. I just have a few examples for you. What I do for the county is I get people out of their jail pre-trial. So that means they're, they're not convicted of any crime, and they're waiting there, waiting for. We ensure these defendants appear, we track their bond conditions, we track their cases. I even show up in court on those mornings, you can ask the judges, I'm in their office, I'm in their courtroom, I'm pointing people in the right direction, making sure that they're where they're supposed to be. Currently, I have five hundred and twenty people out on bond. I check all their cases, and sometimes I have to have them put back in jail when they don't do the right thing. This year to date, I have bailed out two hundred and fifty-one defendants from Potter County Jail. If it costs you fifty-five dollars per day to house an inmate, I've saved the county thirteen thousand dollars for one day. So if you extrapolate that out to thirty days' stay, then I've saved the county four hundred and fourteen thousand this year alone. If you multiply that by the number of Bell Bond companies, that would be over four million dollars here today, we've saved the county. We give all this no expense to the taxpayer. They cost me roughly three hundred grand operating on business. I pay employees, I pay taxes, I pay the county, and my defendants fail to appear. One of the expenses that, that we incur is a fifteen dollar fee that we send off with each bond. This year, I've donated roughly thirty thousand towards keeping good prosecutors and the image of defense. So that fifteen dollar fee that I said will be one, that goes towards bonuses for prosecutors, that goes towards committed to the defense. If you multiply that all Bell Bond companies, that's roughly three hundred thousand. So that's a pretty big amount that we pay Potter County to do our business.
Bonuses to who, I'm sorry?
So there's a fifteen dollar fee that goes with each bond that we send out Potter County. And that fee is divided up between the image of defense and the prosecutor's loyalty.
Okay, thank you.
So we employ thirty-three people to track all of the defendants employed. And when I say thirty-three, that's thirty-three Bell Bonds in Fairytale. And I know that the board is considering additional three employees to track their bonds in the county. And I just don't see how that's going to give an add up to what we do with the thirty-three employees.
Thank you. Thirty-three Bell Bonds has a potential to handle a lot.
That's right. There's thirty-three of us.
Thank you, Jeff.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Number sixteen, Sheriff, acquisition of weapons to consider for approval. Proposed exchange of surplus weapons held by the sheriff and other people, weapons available to GT distributors in the Austin Texas. Authority for exchange of sixes, section two, six, three, four, one, five, two, for the season A, when the season two, Texas, local government.
Almost accurate.
Yeah.
I thought I just saw you.
This is just the exchange of weapons that are really not as useful as they once were. So we're exchanging for basically shotguns. Eleven A seventies are more beneficial on patrol. So we're exchanging those. Uh, GT distributors, what we do is say, we have these weapons and, and if they're possible, we'll go with them too. If you'd like to know what you give us for, in the next day or week, we'll give you. Ten shotguns, we'll give you eight shotguns, new shotguns. So that's for that.
So no money is exchanged.
No, just.
They're not going to pay dollars.
Yeah, I think it said, pay a dollar or give a dollar back.
No, you got that.
I can't remember.
So the exchange that's happening is for the, the rounds on the floor, like the deputies in the, in the, in the jail or?
It's for enforcement.
Enforcement side, okay. And is the type of gun, this is not my skill set, take me back to healthcare, right? But the type of guns being exchanged, is it a more aggressive gun? Is it, help me understand that.
It's just a, I guess, more useful. For instance, eleven A seven shotgun is a, is an automatic shotgun, you know, you just pull a trigger, you know, and it shoots. Happy to have a round shot in there. There's a lot of mechanics goes into that. In a cold freezing car, the mechanics, all of the stuff, it can have malfunctions. So A seventy is a, is a shotgun that you shoot once, you have to rack it, and then shoot again, rack it, shoot again. So it's just, you know, I'm not a professional.
You know more than I do, though, about guns.
The mechanics of it, Julie's husband, Harry is.
He's Harry, okay.
So anyway, that, it's just a better functioning shotgun for patrol and our force that is using.
Okay.
We approve the exchange of surplus weapons held by the sheriff and suitable weapons available from GT distributors of Austin, Texas.
Sir.
Number 17, formal bid number 1163-18 genital supplies to consider and act upon the award of formal bid number 1163-18 genital supplies for various listed vendors with lowest and best bids as presented to the court. I have a motion and a second on the favoration. Number 18, equipment purchase to consider and act upon purchasing machines for treasurer's office and office products on contract TC, ENR142208, in the amount of $3,475.97, funds to come from stationary and supplies. I have a motion and a second on the favoration. Number 18, equipment purchase to consider and act upon purchasing machines for treasurer's office and office products on contract TC, ENR142208, in the amount of $3,475.97, funds to come from stationary and supplies.
And this has to do with the move that we talked about, and what I'm asking for this now is so it can come out of this year's budget. Until we have postage go through and all those things that I can't predetermine, it's possible that we may need to move a few dollars from one of my other line items into my station area to pick up cover this cost. But I'm asking for approval today so we can make this order in and get it out of the end of the year.
And does approval need to be determined in line order?
You're saying you're gonna take it out of your existing budget, we just need to be prepared for this year and you need to be, in case you have to come back?
I'm just being honest with you. I may have to come back and say, I need to move $400 from this line, I don't know where to take here to cover this cost.
So do we need action on this or is she privy to do that differently? So where is this likely to come out of today? What line items? Stationary items?
And we need to approve it because that's always on the, so here that...
I make a motion that we approve purchasing machines for the treasurer's office in preparation for the Santa Fe building from Navarro office products on contract TC, ENR142208, in the amount of $3,475.97, funds to come from stationary and supplies. I have a motion and a second on the favoration. Number 20, employment items for the bridge department, for the unemployment area, pitch as someone forward, as required by the legal field, July 2nd, 2018, and the new employment of Sergio Pardo as maintenance tech, as requested by Ricardo and Steve, July 18th.
We approve the employment items as...
I have a motion and a second on the favoration. Our county projects, 570 people in our jail, and they're dealing with serious problems. I need two females, two male soldiers at the time, 86% felons, 99% veterans. Insurance, I don't know, 59%. Except for session, not anything. General items for next time. Okay, we are in recess until 1:30.